...note that all board members are present this evening. And before we get started, I would like to apologize. We are running a few minutes late, and we had a great time next door this evening. This team was students and their projects and with teachers, so we're running just a few minutes late, so I apologize, and we'll get things moving here really quickly. At this time, please join me in the -- join us in the conference.
Hi. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I do need a motion that the board approve the agenda as presented toward February 7 study session.
So moved.
Thank you. Tim Rosenberg, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Charles. And at this time, we do need to vote for our agenda. These weren't connected.
Are you hot? Are you cold?
I have a four-degree window of happiness.
Okay, very good. We're moving on. Oh, I'm sorry. I need backup. Public comments. At this time, we have public comments. We welcome comments from the audience about the issues being discussed. Those things are on our agenda, so at this time, this is where we have any comments. No comments. Okay, moving on to information reports. There are no information reports this evening. Moving on to our preliminary contracts, agreements, and change orders. And Carol Lemon is here to answer questions.
Sure. I believe we have 15 items for your consideration, and as is our standard practice, you will have the next two weeks until our next meeting, when we will present those for approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? I have a quick question on school pictures. So do we do contract year by year?
You know, on this particular one, I don't have the specific strength here in front of me. Typically, we would have options for renewal. It's Justin Harrell here. Oh, thank you, sir.
It's a one plus two.
One plus two. There we go. It's one year plus a two-year option.
Okay, okay.
Two possible additional years.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. And again, this is our first read, so if you do have questions or something comes forward, please be sure and ask Carol or the appropriate administration person about that. Moving on to board policy adoptions and revisions. Here's a few of the board policy revisions that have been promised to us over the last couple of months. At this time, any questions or comments? This is first read. We'll review these, ask questions. They'll come back to us the end of February for approval. So at this time, any questions? Yes?
It appears that all of these are in reaction to legislation or thing.
Yeah, these are all -- this is the MSBA update, so legislative or a case law and a shift in us reviewing to make sure it aligns with our practice. There you go.
Is that also the case for the final one, the revision of Board of Education policy?
Yeah, these were all MSBA regs, whether or not it was pulled off of a legislative change, but it's an MSBA recommendation.
Just to highlight, that final policy is one that is from district recommendation perspective, and it's in response to a suggestion from our -- excuse me, our financial office.
Gotcha. Okay. Are you referring to the last one, revision of Board of Education policy staff?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we will move on to -- moving on to our curriculum adoption, new business. And at this time, Dr. Allison, there's lots of fun things to tell us.
Well, it's truly my pleasure to introduce the leader of this team, who has been part of this curriculum development and adoption for your information tonight. As you remember, last spring, we brought you MIGs that were the major instructional goals for this coming year. So the work teams have come together, they have created units of study, and they have started to put together that resource list. Again, this is a shift from what we've done in the past, which is kind of a one-size-fits-all type of a curriculum book and resource. And we've kind of done a number of resources to better meet the needs of students and to complement those units of study that are integrated, which I think you just saw next door, in a really profound way. So it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Allison Pilly, who will be introducing her team and walking you through the presentation tonight.
Well, good evening, and thank you for letting us share with you about our curriculum adoption tonight. This is the first time that we've been able to showcase what we were doing with our proposal for the curriculum adoption prior to presenting on this. So I was excited that you all were able to interact with the teachers and some of the students that will be the recipients of this curriculum adoption. So I have a team here that will co-present with me, and we have Annie Wallamire, and she is our science coordinator, and she also works with assessment and other things like that. And then we have Tabitha Utzler and Julie Allen. They are both teachers at Jeffries, and they helped us. They were curriculum writers for third grade. And then we also have Hope Gallimore. She is our secondary literacy coordinator. And Michael DeLuig, he is a teacher at Wilson's Creek, teaches English Language Arts and Social Studies. So you'll be hearing from everybody here in just a minute. Okay, so this year, we were looking at resources for K-5 science and 612 social studies. And I have this slide pretty much on an annual basis, but just as a reminder, this is where we started and the process that we've worked through. So we started last year. Last year was a little bit different because we had House Bill 1490, and that involved the state standards being revised. And as you recall, there were multiple committees for different content areas that worked on state-appointed teams to revise those standards. So once they submitted their standards, then that's kind of where we come in, and we take a look at those and review those standards, and then make adjustments, not necessarily change theirs, but we might want to add to their standards, or maybe this one makes more sense in second grade, that kind of thing. And then we come up with our major instructional goals, which we presented to you all in June of last year, and you approved at that time. From that point, in August, I send an email to publishers saying, or lots of different companies, it's not just textbook publishers anymore, but these are the content areas that we're looking at, these are kind of the resources that we have in mind, please send us what you have available at that point. And so they send a whole bunch of stuff. Some of it's great, not all of it is, though. And so we go through a couple of review cycles before we really present this information to our curriculum writers. So the first thing that we do is we work with Bruce Douglas and Nicole Lemon, and we make sure that any digital content meets our online content capabilities. So this means that it's going to integrate with Canvas. We're going to be able to bulk upload our students, so a person isn't manually transferring students and doing that kind of input, because we're just too big for that. So and then we also, with our coordinators, we look through it and make sure that the resources that we have received meet our standards, our actual MIGs, and then kind of our level of excellence that we want to put into our schools. From there, this is, we did this last year, but we continue to do it this year. We liked the process. We actually brought in teachers at that point, and they developed curriculum units. This year was a little bit different. Last year, we focused at the K-5 level on integrating social studies and English Language Arts. This year, we integrated social studies, science, health, English Language Arts, and math where we could at the K-5 level. And at the 6-8 level, we integrated ELA, our English Language Arts and our social studies together, and we'll get into that here in just a minute. And then from those units, the writers developed a list of the resources that they needed to implement these units. So at that point, we presented our curriculum writers with the resources that we had available that we thought matched their needs based on what they needed for the units that they were writing. And then once they kind of picked what they thought fit best, we also sent that to, or we presented that to our CDC, our Curriculum Development Council, for them to review and make sure that a bigger majority of teachers were comfortable with the programs and the resources. From there, we sent our units and our resource list to administrators, to parents, and to community members to review. We did that electronically, and we had a little Google form where they were able to provide us some feedback. The feedback was positive from the stuff that we received. A lot of parents said it looks really engaging. Some of them are experienced now with project-based learning, and their kids are coming home and talking about the projects and how excited they are, and they liked the real-world applications that a lot of these units and projects have. Then that brings us to tonight, and we are here presenting this to you in hopes of approving the budget. And then after that, if you per your approval, then we will purchase new resources, and then that's when we start training teachers and supporting teachers in the implementation of the resources. Here's just a picture of some of our curriculum-writing teams. The bottom right, that's our second grade team. And Annie, Matt, and Jesse Impossable have been in the room with a group of four teachers every Monday and Wednesday focusing on curriculum. We used to do a big room, where every grade level was in the room, but we didn't feel like we could help them and support them enough in writing the curriculum, so we went to four teachers and at times four curriculum people in there, making sure that they didn't have any questions and everybody was on the right track. And then the top left, those are some of our social studies writers, and Hope had them in for, this is sixth grade all the way through senior-level courses, and writing that curriculum and making sure that they were up to speed on project-based learning and things that needed to be included in those units. So our goals for this year was to definitely integrate the content. We had got a really good start with that last year with K-5 social studies. We feel like it's even more integrated, and I think you'll see that in the unit that they're going to share. We wanted digital and interactive resources and items that would be used in our classrooms. With our last science adoption, that was about seven years ago, we received a ton of stuff, just books.
Two of our writers are here to tell you about one of the units, and they're going to kind of walk you through how the resources would be integrated in with that science unit. Do you want me to hold something?
Brain freeze, that's the one.
Brain freeze, they're going to, this is awesome. So these contribute to develop a healthy popsicle, and then they have to design a container that will keep it from melting. So it's, they're going to be, the criteria is the healthy of the popsicle or dessert, iced dessert, and how to keep it from melting when they take it out of the freezer.
Thank you for having us here this evening. First of all, we just want to say it's an honor to be able to be here with you and share what we've been doing over the past few months. And we wanted to definitely say thank you to the learning support team for this awesome opportunity to be able to write this curriculum, because it's really helping us grow as teachers as well. So the unit that we are going to be talking to you about is called ecotourism, and the culminating event that students will create is going to be an ecotourism service or company. And the big question that they're going to be answering is how do we use the ecosystems, specifically here in Missouri, to generate tourism? And we are writing the curriculum, and we're integrating English Language Arts, health, math, science, and social studies all into one. And so they picked out the standards that would match that, and then students will be learning, it could be even a science lesson one day, and then a social studies lesson kind of the next, or integrated in one day together. And so that is, all the learning is flowing as one. So you might ask yourself, well, what does that look like? So the whole prospect of the project is students are going to learn about the various characteristics, so animals and their adaptations here in Missouri, plants and their adaptation, the history, why the two rivers connect at St. Louis, and why that's such an important part of the gateway to the West. So they'll be taking all of this knowledge, and like Tabitha said, creating a company or a service. So for instance, we could imagine our students might be interested in the caves here in the Ozarks. Well, they need to have a tourism to get people to Missouri that our students, they'll get to study each region, and to bring in our student choice, then they'll get to choose which region they want to create their company in. So they'll have a lot of choice in this. We're kind of going to front-load the information for them, and then they get to use that knowledge to create a successful company or service. So yeah. So here are some of the unit resources that we either have now or that we're wanting to purchase. So our first one is Science A to Z, and so we've brought some examples, if you saw them at the showcase. But this is a habitat in a bottle, and Annie made it nicely for us. And so students will be able to create a habitat, and so they could go out and get sod from their front yard, they could go to a forest, they could go to a grassland, and we will be making habitats in the classroom. So you can see the water cycle's going on, and this is a hands-on experiment from Science A to Z that they'll be able to do in our classroom. They will also be able to dissect different flowers and kind of understand what a flower is made of, and the reproductive systems of the flower, and the various wildlife and plants that they'll see throughout Missouri. Also, with the hands-on experience, there's text. So you can have those higher-level students, give them the text, and they can read it on themselves, but there are the lower-level students where it does differentiate to their level. In the middle, you'll see the, what do I do with animal teeth and hair? And we're going to purchase those hopefully to teach about adaptations. And so they're really great books. My students, we've done what to do with animal teeth before, and they just love it. And so being able to use that in our curriculum, it just makes me so excited. And the new coat for Anna, we're going to use to teach about goods and services. It has a lot to do with the economy, so supply and demand, cost benefit, it's all kind of in that book that we found, and we found a great activity that teachers are able to read through and even do the next day if they need. And then I'm going to talk about Pebble Go Next Science. It's kind of the higher level, so again, it's differentiated based on students. And some of my kiddos this year have already tried exploring it to gain knowledge on just things they're interested in. And so luckily, it can read this to the students, or they can sit there and they can read it themselves. There's awesome videos and pictures, and so it's very interactive, and it grabs their attention. And so to bounce off that, Pebble Go is something we've already had with the science portion, and so I think it's a great idea to go ahead and purchase that next one for those maybe higher-level students, because what we have seen with Pebble Go is, as she said, the videos, there's even games, flashcards, vocab review, there's a lot incorporated in it. And the great part is when you walk past those Chromebooks and you see them playing those games, it's focused on something. So you know, they chose dinosaurs, they chose to look at this ecosystem, and everything embedded in it is meeting those learning objectives. So Pebble Go is a great resource that students even go to just for fun. They'll say, can I go to Pebble Go while they have a little extra time? Smart Science is what Annie had spoke about earlier. It's the interactive labs that we're really excited about. We want to provide as much as we can for our students, but some things are not possible to actually do in the classroom or even right outside our school. So Smart Science would give us the opportunity to really experience some online interactive labs, and our students could even experience that on their Chromebooks and learn things that they couldn't otherwise learn. So those are just some resources to consider, and we are excited to use them in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hope Gallimore, and as Allison said, I'm the secondary literacy coordinator, but I also get to work with social studies teachers. So it's been really exciting to work with them to develop curriculum for our core classes and also for our elective classes on the social studies 612 level. So when we met together with teachers, we wanted to look at what were our resources that we had available to us, and we wanted to make sure there were resources that would be engaging for our students and would be helpful to teach all of these new interactive lessons that we've created, PBL, project-based learning lessons. So we wanted to make sure that there were primary sources, we wanted to make sure there were simulations that were getting students out of their seat and experiencing history. And then especially for those, as I said, elective courses, some of them are very specific, such as the Holocaust, so we wanted to make sure that we had some supplemental resources that really met the needs for those students and teachers for courses that are that specific. And like Allison said as well, we have some learning experiences for some trips for our students to take, so we wrote that in as well. This is an overview for our 6-8 courses, and again, these were written completely integrated with social studies and English Language Arts. So when we brought teachers in, we did not just bring in social studies teachers, we also brought in English Language Arts teachers to write the curriculum. And we used a resource that we have already purchased for English Language Arts, our StudySync, and then we were looking at how we can integrate that. So a lot of these, you might tell, they do have a focus on social studies, but when it comes to that skill, we're looking from the ELA side. So that's how we were able to integrate for most of middle school, and I think our teachers are really excited about it because they're able to work together. We have more teams at the middle school level, so I'm really excited to see how this is implemented next year. For the 9-12 level, this is just a snapshot of our core courses, so U.S., World, and LibLaw. If you are interested in what we're going to do, we wrote the same way for our elective courses. We have a link to that. But we decided to group them by unit or theme as they came out for Missouri Learning Standard. And then again, these are all project-based learning units to get our students really thinking about history, acting history, experiencing the same things that those people in history So now I'm going to turn it over to Michael DeLuig. He's a teacher from Wilson's Creek, who actually is an ELA and social studies teacher, and he's going to walk us through one of his units for sixth grade.
Thank you, Hope. I also wanted to say thank you for taking the time to listen to me, and I wanted to thank the learning team as well. For social studies and English, what we wanted to do is when we brought them together, we wanted to make sure that the students understood that history really is a series of stories, and that we tell these stories to our children, and we pass these things down, and so that history isn't just what I tell my students, a bunch of dead dudes and dates, but it really is the social story that we all have together. So one of our potential units is how do I, as a sixth-grade student, actually design a civilization that will thrive and stand the test of time? That's where we're approaching from the social studies end. Students are going to work collaboratively with a group, and they're going to create a multimedia presentation in response to this driving question. We're going to be looking at many of the characteristics that all civilizations have, whether it be government, some type of a religion, they have a writing system, they have specialized jobs in social classes, they have arts and culture, technology, and public works are all going to be addressed through both English and social studies. The unit description, how it basically starts out, is it's kind of, if you remember the TV show Lost, that kind of scenario. They are going to end up on a desert island, and it is a group of students, and they have to basically build a civilization from scratch, from the very beginning. Now, with our units, like Hope said, we already have in place in English a StudySync curriculum, which you guys have purchased for us, and that curriculum is very thematic-based. And the theme that we paired with our curriculum that we're proposing is called Turning Points. And the Turning Points, essentially what it walks the students through is major life events and major changes that affect them personally. So they will be doing things like exploring, things like getting married, and things like what to do when you are faced with a difficult life decision, like where to go to college, or all of those things that we face every day, and then we'll be applying that to history. Now with TCI, what we're hoping to do is it's a very experiential-based program, and we're also asking for some supplemental material. There's an Interact, is what the company is called. It's called Empires. It is a simulation game, and what it does is it groups the students into groups of four of their own little civilizations, and then it walks them through, week by week, how civilizations have been formed through the lens of the very first empires that were built, Mesopotamia more specifically. So they'll be learning about Mesopotamia, Egypt, India, and China, all through this Interact simulation software. And so week one, they will do nothing but study, okay, how are we going to create a stable food supply on this island? And then every Friday, what's your stable food supply going to look like? And then the next week, they have to set up some form of government, and then the next week, and we just go through the eight or nine weeks, and we tie it not only to the civilizations they're creating themselves, but also current history and what we do here in Springfield and in the greater Missouri. And then what StudySync allows us to do is then study individuals who face the same kind of crises that we face as civilizations, and kind of tie all those together. And so at the end of this, what they're supposed to be coming out with is a fully functioning civilization that they will present in a multimedia way to community members, to other teachers, to other students. We've looked at and talked into reaching out to local universities, maybe some history professors, even having, like our feeder pattern at Wilson's Creek is Kickaboo, having some Kickaboo history teachers come over. We've been in contact with some people over at Quest who do world history and working very closely with 10th grade, because they do a lot of world history, and figuring out how we can best support them, and then bringing them over and letting them see what we're doing in sixth grade. That way, when they get over to high school, the 10th grade teacher can say, you know, that we know that we've done this. So TCI, really, what we're proposing that for is that experiential learning, the lessons that really give us the daily life of the people who lived in those civilizations. It does a wonderful job of breaking down all of the characteristics. There are sections just on how these civilizations created food supplies, how these civilizations created their governments, what are the types of governments, working in argumentative writing from English, you know, if your civilization is presented with these options for government, which one are you going to choose, and why are you going to choose that, and how does that work out for other civilizations? And just making them then critically think and defend their answers to each other. It also has, TCI has a lot of videos that I feel help break down difficult concepts for students. And it comes also with pre-made assessment software, which is much easier for the teachers to use. It lines up with both StudySync, major instructional goals that we have built in there as well. So it's just one cohesive unit, just teaching them that history is just one giant story. And I'll turn it back over to Allison.
Okay, well, hopefully you are as excited about these upcoming units as we are. I now will go over the budget. This is.
Don't go over the budget.
It's the fun part. It is quite a bit of money. This is within the approved, the budget that you all have approved for a curriculum for this fiscal year. So it's already, it's already in there. But I just want to point out that it does support these resources for seven years. We used to, when we would buy resources for seven years when they were textbooks, they were dated almost immediately. But now that we are purchasing digital resources, they are continuously updated, the teachers will have a much better grasp of how to use them and how to implement them, and they just have a better shelf life than when we were buying textbooks. We will update our curriculum, our units more frequently, but this is the resource that we would integrate into our units. We do, whenever we make curriculum purchases, we are including special ed teachers, we're including Title I teachers, we're including ELL teachers, so that everyone is able to access the general curriculum and then differentiate it as needed. And all the programs that we're looking at really lend themselves to that. So there's the budget. The right column, that would be the ongoing costs, and those would just come out of our program budgets that we have on an annual basis.
Is that a cumulative ongoing cost or annual?
The right column would be an annual cost. And a lot of that, it would be money that we were spending on science consumables or things like that anyway. It would just shift a little bit to a new purchase. Our next steps would be training opportunities for our teachers. We're looking at an initial training just to get them familiar, and then an ongoing training, it would almost be monthly or at least quarterly, to help prepare them for the upcoming units, so that they're familiar with the science experiments, they're familiar with the text, they're familiar with the potential writing that they could incorporate into these units. We just want to make sure that we're supporting our teachers the best we can.
So is that more training than they would have had historically?
We typically do a one-day big training at the beginning, and then throughout, we would have like optional after-school, here's an hour if you want to come to it. And I, we're rethinking that because those aren't highly attended, you know, teachers are busy, so we're looking at a combination like a digital training, if they would rather view this in their classroom, or if they need additional support, they can come in and we can work with them face-to-face.
Well, I appreciate you presenting it from that point of view, but I'm thinking, if I've got my parent hat on, because to me, I'm thinking that substitutes in my kid's classroom while you're spending a lot of time teaching them.
Oh, sure.
Is that what it's going to look like?
No, we typically do, we try to stick with, for this type of stuff, after-school training, so that they could come, and we'll have a snack for them, and then we can learn together. We do have other trainings that are, you know, half-days during the school day, but typically this type of stuff is done either on our professional learning days or after school.
And not so much more than it's been, so that they feel burdened?
Well, and it wouldn't be, we haven't worked out all of this, all of the kinks yet, but our thinking is, we just want to provide a time if they need it. Some teachers aren't going to need it.
Right, some of them are.
Some teachers aren't going to need it, and we don't want to require it if they don't. But if someone needs an additional support, we want to be there for them. And that's why we want to do it digitally as well, so they wouldn't have to come in at all if they don't want to. And then next year, we begin this whole process over with K-12 Physical Education, 612 Science, and 912 Business Ed and Marketing.
What questions do you have about the curriculum adoption?
I had several. How did you, you mentioned that, the first one, I ask you, you mentioned that you were in, used to have them groups with all the classes in the room. How did you deal with the transition between second grade to third grade? Or did you stick solely to what the standard said, so that there didn't have to be a lot of, I know when you put the standards together, you know, there was a lot of, well, does this belong in third grade, fourth grade, and how do we do that? How did we do that from the standpoint of our own grades to make sure that we weren't, quote, like stepping on toes or getting in the way?
Yeah, we actually spent, like, a week in a conference room together, our coordinators did. And we cut every standard out onto small strips of paper, and we were taping them up. I know a couple people walked by when we were, and they're like, what is going on in there? But we're taping them up, and each unit was a different poster and moving them around. And that's where we decided, you know, this one really fits nicely with this unit, and we think that second graders could understand it, or things like that. And so we kind of shifted it around to make sure that it fit well within the unit.
So we didn't stick solely to the standards? Did we accelerate any of them, or change any of them?
There's very few that were changed from one year to another year, maybe two, three, that many. And then, we were really careful when we looked at our units, because like, economics is in every grade. So we were careful to make sure we weren't duplicating the project, or duplicating how that concept was presented, and tried to have a variety within that vertical alignment.
You guys did good on the standards.
Yeah.
I guess a couple of comments, then another question. I really appreciate it. I didn't hear the word textbook said at all. Literally, here's a textbook that says "science" on it. I really am impressed with that, that it's much more interactive. And I was listening and counting the times I heard the word "teach," and I didn't hear it. That it was learning, it was engagement, it was that, it wasn't teaching. And the kids are hands-on doing stuff, which I really appreciate that culture of learning, not teaching, as far as, and it's not bad, it's just, this is not a spoon-feeding, that they're actually learning on their own. And I, because I was, I wanted to hear that, that's what...
Student inquiry was definitely a focus for us. We wanted to make sure that these resources were accessible to the students, not teachers having, you know, the teacher guide and then, yes, spoon-feeding the information. We wanted students to be able to access the information.
And the last one, I am remembering dead dudes and dates. That's, I've got that day on, that's, I'll never forget that one. One of the concerns I have, and always have had, is the seven-year cycle of curriculum adoption. That, it's amazing how history kind of occurs every day. Is the ongoing cost, it says seven years of resources, is that 120,000 or 48,000 on an annual basis to keep up with what's changing in history, or being added to history, or how do we stay current five years down the road?
Right.
With Social Studies, Science, either one?
Right.
I mean, how do we do, because I've always thought seven years is a long time. A lot of things happen there.
So, the big amounts, the 1.3 million and the 1 million for K-5 Science and Social Studies, that would be, so Science A to Z, it would be a seven-year purchase. We would have the platform for seven years, and we're not going to pay into it again. The 120 on the right side would be for consumable costs, so they need soil to make, you know, the habitat. And then also Pebble Go is another, it's a research database, and they don't do seven-year options, it's an annual cost.
So they, it's updated all the time?
Yes.
Okay.
We vowed not to look at a program that wouldn't be continuously updated.
Kind of assumed that, but I just wanted to make sure the...
Yeah, and the Science A to Z, which is our major purchase for K-5 Science, we've, you all approved Reading A to Z last year for our students, and that has been a huge success for our students, because it does differentiate the reading, it reads to them, they have interactive tools that they can highlight and things like that, and so they're already comfortable with that program, this is adding in the Science component.
Great.
Anyone else?
If the standards change, let's say in the next seven...
Please medically speak.
Let's just say.
Shot in the bear. Don't even talk about that.
Is, are these platforms sufficiently customizable, flexible, that they could conceivably adapt to whatever might conceivably happen in the next seven years?
Yes, they are, and I...
That's a good question.
I think it is, because we didn't write the curriculum based on the resource. We wrote curriculum, and we pulled in a resource that would support it. So, in years past, we would have a science textbook, and if the standards changed, yeah, we might be up a creek, but with this, we wrote curriculum, so we could, we have the power to shift the curriculum, and we would just pull in different resources, or relocate it, or things like that.
Perfect. Good question. Jill?
So this is my comment, I found that room overwhelming that we were in before.
Me too.
But now I'm saying to myself, I did well, because I spent about 20 minutes with that crew on the second row.
Good.
And I typically tell my family, like, I'm schooled out, you know, I've been to college, I've been to law school, I don't want to go to school again. But I think I do.
So fun.
This is outstanding.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone have anything else?
Hi. First of all, thank you for all of those in the second row and the first row who took time out to come and present and share your passion and the effort that you've put towards creating this. So, thank you for sharing that and briefing us on that. And I love, I mean, life doesn't work in silos, even if you're in lows, you know? I mean, it's like, you've got all kinds of subjects all there at the same time, so it's thrilling to see our students get to participate in more real-life learning from all different angles. And as, you know, as you're sharing and you're talking about these particular subjects or what you potentially were creating curriculum on, I'm hearing marketing, sales, business, you know, I mean, so there's so much more that's being tapped into than just the few subjects that you're intentionally creating curriculum on. So, it's just, it's a very exciting time, so, thank you.
I would just say thank you to this team, and thank you for doing the hard work, right? The easy work would have been to just gone with those vendors, and picked out a package and throw stuff, right? But this is the hard work, saying, we're going to design it around what is best for kids. And that is messy. That's bringing in learning team and teachers, and really digging in and cutting standards and putting them in units, and then bringing the supplies and the resources that teachers need. So, I want to thank you for your dedication, your commitment to this work. This is the right work for kids, because it's rooted in experience of really learning and creating and problem-solving. So, great job, thank you very much.
I'm not finished yet.
Last word here is the friend.
I think it, I think a very important message, and I hope everyone has picked up and hears, that although we have standards, we have always had standards, learning standards, as a guide for statewide, now we always had national science standards, but we don't have state standards. But there is so much flexibility for the local district to look at, what is it we want our students to know and be able to do by the time they graduate? And then our teachers and our curriculum experts then have the flexibility to sit down and look at, what is it exactly we want our kids to know, and then go out and look for resources. And then, I guess your next step then would be writing, are you still writing curriculum guides? Annie, I guess I'm looking...
We're going to be... Because once we finish, we'll have to go back, because it'll be kid-proof, and we'll have to tweak it.
Yeah, so, there's a lot of work involved in this process. So that's what I think is, sometimes people miss that, that this is, although we have standards, we can certainly develop our curriculum based upon our needs and our students' needs in this part of the country. And then the, another question I have is, does the budget, and this is for Allison, does the budget include stipends or additional pay for the teachers that worked so hard to help select the resources, and/or those that will come back around after they're selected to work on the projects?
That's a good question. This budget does not include that. The salary stipend budgets are from a different fund, and...
But do they receive...
They do, yeah. If they work, if they come together during the school day, we pay for a sub. If they come together at, after contract time is over, then they receive a stipend.
Because this is additional work...
Oh, yeah.
That we're asking teachers to do above and beyond what they are. And the interesting thing is, there's always a group there willing to do that. Sometimes you'll see them doing science, and then you'll see them come back around and do English, and then they'll come back around and math. But they're always willing to do that, and I think right now, we see, we have three of course this evening that, I would guess you guys, this is not your first time to select materials or work on curriculum. So, we appreciate that, and those teachers that...
Absolutely.
...a lot, that do that. So, it's just important to me as a board member that, I know back in the day, it was very difficult to find the money to pay teachers for their extra time, and I'm hoping that we do better than that.
We do.
Today, so, okay, that's what I'm saying. It's great. Great to be here.
Okay, anything else? All right, thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. Here we go. So we'll vote on that next time, right? We'll vote on that next year.
Take science seriously.
Okay, so we're going to move on. Thank you for being here, for all your great information. Moving on to 7.01, unfinished business. This time we do not have unfinished business, no items.
We got finished. We don't roll like that anymore. Finish it, we finish it.
Okay, so now we're to public comments. This is the section of me where we allow comments on topics that are not on our agenda item. Do we have, no comments this evening? So we're going to move on to our strategic discussion, and Dr. Dawson's up again to introduce our speaker.
So I thank all of our AAA team for putting this middle-of-the-year presentation for you. As you remember, our commitment to you is to bring you a beginning, middle, and end-of-the-year progress report, and where we're at in some academic achievement. But in this report also today, you're going to hear a little bit about, not just the data piece, but the wraparound supports, the AAA and Learning Support, who just vacated Rose 1 and 2, where those teams are all linking arms to support teachers in the classroom. So, it's my privilege to introduce to you Amy St. John, who will start this presentation.
Thanks. Thank you all very much for allowing me to join you here this evening and give you a wonderful middle-of-the-year update. And as Dr. Dawson said, I'd also like to thank just Dr. Ben Hyenworth, and Dr. Nicole Duman, and Bruce Douglas, as well as Allison's team with Learning Support, and then the AAA team, as you mentioned. What you will see in this report tonight is really just kind of, like you said, the full gamut of student success that's happening. Part of that is the support that we are providing with our teachers, and part of that is down to the standard with the student, and the student understanding their data. I think, I heard that a lot in the room today, the student showcase. My favorite story by far, I think, was the little girl who, I walked up and she was showcasing Lexia, and she looked at me, and she was probably a second grader, and she looked at me, and she said, "I know this probably seems really difficult, but it's not." And she went on to explain how it worked, and I thought, this is amazing, yeah, because she doesn't think that it's difficult, so that's, that's a win for us all. So, we will start where we left off last time, when we were together in November to talk about student success report. And so, this was kind of the look ahead for where we were heading. A lot of it had to do, again, with that teacher support, that professional learning, and making sure that they were definitely connected to the resources that they had. The next few slides, the Learning Support Team provided, and this is the work that has happened. And so it's very exciting to see, really, just this really long list of support that teachers have been able to experience, whether it be through their content resources, improving instructional strategies, the Blended Learning Office, or just that addition to the project-based learning, or the PPL units. Again, that adaptive software that I mentioned, when I got to visit with the little second grader today, knowing that the student can speak so articulately about that means that the teacher could as well. And that's very reassuring to us, because we know that it's infusing the whole system, and that the teacher's still supported in that. In addition to that, with the, as Annie mentioned earlier, the Curriculum Development Councilors with the CDC, and really looking at that information, you heard talk about that as they went through the adoption process, but really understanding that through the whole curriculum. The instructional strategies that support specific content is so key, so that teachers understand how to pivot and how to teach that type of a lesson when a student doesn't get it. And so that's the type of work that we're, that we're supporting and working with. The other part of the teacher or the student process is the stuff that goes with it, right? And so, the ignite by the numbers, this is just overwhelmingly exciting, and I can't believe the back row is not laid out exhausted because of all the work that they're doing. 13,000 Chromebooks have gone out since we last spoke for this, as well as the 3,000 iPads. You can see the support the Blending Learning Specialists have been able to offer. It's just amazing, all that gets done in this district, it's so exciting. And as I said, you can feel it with the excitement of the teachers and in the buildings when you visit them, because they know that they are loved, and our love is shared by these numbers that you see right here before you. I think Appy Hour is probably one of my favorite that you hear so much about, you see it tweeted about a lot, it's just really kind of like the cool place to be, I think, for the teachers, and so I just think that's very exciting.
It's all in the brand.
We're going to go into where we are in the assessment plan, and we'll begin to talk about that data for the middle of the year. So again, that's that MOY. We talked about the beginning of the year, now we're going to move into the middle of the year. What I think is important to understand is what is the purpose of a benchmark assessment? So, that's a question that we get a lot of times, especially when we're talking with teachers, and you've, I've explained it to this room using like a ruler, where the high points are the benchmark data, and then the smaller dashes are really that adaptive software, that daily and weekly conversation with kids, and really prescribing where they are in their learning. And when we look at that through the data lens, it begins to tell what our department is offering to buildings. When a window closes, then this team is connected to the buildings and helping them understand their middle-of-the-year data. So, data is just a point, it's not emotional, and that's the thing you always have to remember. It could be wrong. The very first thing that I say a lot of times about data is, does it meet the reasonable person's test? So there are times that a classroom teacher will know that that data makes sense because that's what they believe about their classroom, and sometimes it doesn't, because they know what happened in their classroom. Whether it be a bad day, or it could have been a fire drill in the middle of it, I'm, you know, there's just all kinds of little stories that go with it. We talk about meeting the buildings with their DNA, their data needs assessment. Each of the buildings are different, each of the grade levels are different, and that's okay. And so we really want to do a customized approach to that, and we're doing that one conversation at a time. We have been to all of the buildings, we have visited at various levels, we meet with the buildings, we listen to the teachers' process and how they're utilizing data, we identify barriers of getting to know the data. It's funny, because a lot of times I'll say to them, we make no judgment if you've forgotten your password, we make no judgment if you forgot how to use what we're actually talking about here. That's why we are paired up with you as a support system for you, and deploying out into the buildings to do that. We're also looking at the skill deficiencies by students, showing them right in the system how that deficiency can be met through these resources that are just a click away. We also team up with the Learning Support Team, so that within the systems of Lexia or Dreambox, for instance, you can prescribe for that student, you can assign based upon those standards. It's very exciting. Obviously, I'm always very excited about data. But it's a very personalized approach by the building, by the grade level, and even by that teacher team, so. When we talk about the middle of the year, and we talk about where the data is supposed to be, that's a common question is, well, where are we supposed to be, or, you know, are we supposed to be at a certain percentage, or what would the percentage look like if we, you know, where will we be by the end of the year? The purpose of setting up the data slides here is to show you the beginning of the year and middle of the year, last year, as connected to where we are this year. Last year was our first full year of implementation K-8, so now we're in the second year. As we become to the, would get to the end of the year, we would lay those again, side-by-side to this, and then next year, it would repeat and just continue to show our own trend data. Okay? Does that make sense? What you have is a series of slides, and I'll train your eye to kind of focus in on what we're looking at here. So, when we have the ELA already percent at grade level, at or above grade level, what we are looking to see is, based upon the middle of the year, where students should be in their learning, the percentage of them that are at that space or above that. And what we look at is, it's important to see the percentage overall... And what we look at is, it's important to see the percentage overall. So, we'll use kindergarten as an example. It's important to see that 62.8% of them are where they're supposed to be, we'll say. But more important is to look to see, did we move the students through that progress? Because remember, the teachers get a new batch of kids, they meet the students where they are, and they take them on that journey. Remember how we talked about planes, trains, and automobiles to get them to where we need them to be? So, at times, at first glance, when you see the data, you think, "Oh, we're better or we're worse than we were last year." There are times that would be the case, and we peel back the layers and look at the standard deficiencies, as I talked about. But more importantly, we look to say, "Are we better off this year in terms of growing students? Are we closing that achievement gap? And are we really getting that student to learn what we need them to learn based upon those standards?" So, as I described here, in kindergarten as an example, we are getting closer to, to an amazing result. We had 21.5 was the difference between beginning of the year and middle, as compared to 33.1 at this, so that's an overwhelming, exciting statement. Kindergarten always has a lot more space to grow, so that's the way it's probably always going to look. But then you look at the sixth grade, and you say, "We're outpacing ourselves from where we were last year. We have more kids at or above the line, but we're also growing them at a faster pace." And so, it's very exciting to see, because at 10.2 compared to the 10.6, which is a .4 difference. Okay? The series slides will just look like this, and I'll just point out some celebrations as we go. The subgroup for our ELA students, again, that kindergarten shows a very exciting growth pattern, but you see in the second grade there, again, we're outpacing our growth, we're closing that gap, because we are moving kids further ahead than what we have been in the past for our two comparative years. Okay? And again, what we look like, when we were at, yesterday, Dave and I were at Truman Elementary, and we were sitting down with the third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade teachers, and we spent about an hour with each one of those grade levels, and we looked at this type of data at their building, and we, of course, said, "First of all, does that meet the reasonable person's test? Does that tell the story that you think that it should tell? Yes, no?" We moved through that, and we said, "Okay, now let's look at kids." You can look at the kids through profiles, and we say, "Okay, does that student list, literally by student name, does that match to what you are working on? Yes, it is? No, it isn't? We need more resources." We're really breaking down and seeing that they need more phonetic, standard, excuse me, the skilled deficiency was in phonetics, and how do we support that learning? And so, the, again, it's just one click away to be able to do that. As we talk about math, and that would be like in the area of Dreambox, we started to say, we have students who are missing. When you talk to fourth grade teachers, a lot of them will talk about fractions, and the students are struggling with fractions, third and fourth grade teachers. And sometimes it's because of the things that are happening in the lower grades, K1 and 2, that really need to have further conversations. It's not a quick fix, it's a long-term fix, but it's very important. What we can see in the data here is in first grade, we can see that we came in the year with a lower level of student, but we are actually growing at a faster pace than we were last year. So, in other words, we're moving the students through that curriculum and through those standards faster than we did last year, which is very encouraging to share with the third grade teachers to say, "The right work is happening in those lower years." Okay? For the math subgroup, again, just some celebrations to show, very similar kindergarten and first grade, we're seeing, again, good pace for growth. At the data point over data point, when you say, "Okay, are we where we want to be in terms of at or above grade level?" Not always. That's definitely where the conversation starts, and then that's when we get into a student-level profile report for that actual teacher, and we start helping them. The conversations that we had yesterday specifically in math were the depth of knowledge of the teacher, needing to understand how better to support that, and so immediately, right then, halftime adjustment, as I say, worked for the Patriots. We literally stopped, dropped, and figured it out. Well, I had to say that, right? I was just seeing if everybody was listening.
That was cruel.
But just wanted to keep going.
For the halftime adjustment, the, the teacher said, "Yes, I really," you know, kind of raised her hand and said, "Yes, I really need some additional." We go ahead and email Jussie from Learning Support right then, "What are the very, you know, top five things that you can work with this teacher and make sure that they understand and support?" And it's instant, it's real-time adjustments, which to us, really has never been done before. That's what we're hearing back from the buildings and from them, saying, "Thank you so much for meeting us where we are as a building and helping us on our journey, just like you're wanting us to model for our students." So, it's been very exciting.
Is the renting, going back?
Yes.
Is the, any correlation or relationship between middle-of-the-year 16 in second grade and middle-of-the-year third grade for the same cohort of kids?
That's always a great question. For this particular tool, that, that would not necessarily how we look at it, and the reason is that we're, we're looking at different standards for that group of kids. But it is important for us to see, are the skill deficits still there? So, it's a great question. One of the reports that we work with them in I Ready is to look at students, Dave does a great job of showing this through the Missouri Learning Standards that we were just talking about, so you can look at a batch of kids, and you can say, "What are they still deficient in, in those lower years?" And so, that is, when you're looking at a third grader, you can say, "They're still not getting that first grade skill," and so that's where we can start to do that intervention.
And that, I mean, that really goes down to the student, not the cohort, but the student.
Right at the student level to do that. And I Ready kind of plates that up for them really nicely, and it's just in a clickable format. And again, as I said, if that's something that they need to add to the plate of the student to really kind of hone in on that, so that they can do these amazing projects, right, then what we want to do is we want to kind of prescribe that through their adaptive software to create that path for the student.
Can I ask you a couple questions? Can I ask sort of at the district level, the same question you ask the classroom teacher? Does this kind of sort of make sense to you? I mean, is there something here that strikes you as a little weird?
That's a great question. We have internal watch lists, so that's kind of what we say as a team, is we say, "Does any of this kind of throw you off?" There's a report that Dave also runs, it's called the rushing report, and it means a student just kind of rushed through it too quickly and has thresholds, and there were a few buildings that we felt like, "Yeah, that doesn't seem right." And so, he just immediately visits back with that building, and, and they oftentimes will say, "It was this or that." What we also found was oftentimes if a student is with their device and in their own classroom, they're seeing better results, and where they're going down the hall to a lab, not all, and this is not a, like a correlation study, these are kind of anecdotal. But when asked, "Well, could they just go ahead and take the math test within their room?" Absolutely, yeah, you can make that adjustment. You can do that. You have that autonomy to be able to do that in a building, if that's what's best for your kids. And so, that's been a great thing. As the ignite continues, and we're one to one, then it obviously will get a little bit better too. So, in other words, the students don't think they're going down the hall to do this in a different type of environment. It's that we had math lessons, and now we're moving into I Ready, and eventually we'll move into math, and it's just us checking to see what you know. Good question.
He has six more, he's not done.
This will be my last one. If, so this is aggregate data for us. You might hate to do this, too, would you mind flipping back to the first English language arts slide?
Sure.
And I just want to, wow, that was quick. Okay, I, I want to celebrate all the celebrations too, but I'm curious about, say, fourth grade here.
Those would be one that's on our watch list, yes. So, we then talk a little bit further with our fourth grade teachers to find out what do they believe the deficiencies are, if that was kind of the story starter, and they weren't right on top of answering, and I don't say that in the most polite way, then we help them understand how better to know their students. And so, those were really great door openers for us, is when we would say, "Okay, at the middle of the year, we're kind of where we were at the beginning of the year. Did you have a, kind of where Jerry's question was, did you have a batch of kids that came in at a lower level, or is it that you're having additional struggles?" And there's, obviously, there's tons of variables that come into play, but yes, that is exactly how we review the data, and then work back with the buildings to ensure that they feel supported in that effort, whether it be that they haven't been looking at it, and now we are, and how can we help?
Yeah, good, thank you.
My question is, use that fourth grade team this year, does that mean 32.9% came in already at or above grade level?
Based upon where this, where they're supposed to be in the standards at that point.
So, 32% came, so these are, we have beginning-of-the-year grade level standards, and we have middle-of-the-year grade level standards, and we have end-of-the-year grade level.
They call it a band, a target band within I Ready, and they're, they're looking to see where should a student be at this time of year. They break it into the trimesters, and they say, "Based upon the first trimester, the second trimester, and the third, this is where they should be in that efficiency or proficiency level."
To be at grade level.
To meet all the standards. And as you might expect, the older the student gets, the harder it is, because if there was a gap, that gap continues to grow. So, you're always gonna see your kind of, you know, kindergarten have the biggest gain, they have the most to learn. Then in third grade, it gets hard, because that's when it switches from learning how to read to reading to note, you know, kind of an approach, and then in, and then the six, five, six, and seven. You can see five, six, and seven is starting to show kind of an upward story, but we did, we, we did a dive deep into the data of fourth grade, because that appears to be an anomaly right now of what's going on in fourth grade, so. But even talking to fourth grade teachers yesterday, they're still working through some deficiencies, you know, they're, they're meeting the kids where they are, but they are working through some deficiencies that, that are definitely in the classroom that, that they're making up for lost time, so. And there's that struggle to get everything covered that's new, and bring forward the deficiencies that you're looking on.
End-of-the-year, say, grade three is not the equivalent of beginning-of-the-year grade four?
No.
Those are not-
Not in a benchmark type system like those, right? Great question. Yep. Ready to move on?
I'm ready to move on. I'm just saying, if you're not a teacher, and don't have this slide thing, and you tell us over and over again, I don't think normally, unless we're speaking in different languages to parents, that that becomes very complicated to me, that we have bands of, where you are, and you have bands of at the beginning of the year, and bands in the middle, and bands at the end, and at the end of third grade is not the same band as in the fourth grade. And maybe, I mean, I, I know this is where we're moving, but I think that would be very difficult to explain to somebody that's not every day teaching and understanding, "So, where is my child?"
Yeah, and that's a great question.
So, I'd want to say, in just a few minutes, I'd want to say, "So, where's my child?"
Yeah.
So, exactly, are they where they ought to be, and other than all this other thing, you know? And can we explain that in the two minutes? I mean, to them? Can teachers explain that for two minutes with their child? We've got to look at all this, but they, they don't, they just got to look at one child.
Maybe not two minutes, but in two pages. So, I Ready actually provides a parent report that we show them, because they're gonna have parent conferences, and they can batch that out, and it literally would say, "Here's what Amy knows," and it's in, it's in mom and dad language. "Here's what Amy knows. Here's what Amy's working on, and here are some resources and things that you could even do at home to help." And so, it's really nice mom and dad type of language, and it also speaks to the teacher having that one-click approach to being able to have a resource to provide to parents. And so, that again was something we shared yesterday at Truman. Very similar question, so you must have been a fly on the wall. They just said, "How can we," because, yes, as practitioners, our sleeves are rolled up, and we're down into the weeds of it, but moms and dads, they just need to know, "Am I good? You know, are we doing okay? And if not, what can I do to help?" And, and yes, we can actually do that.
Question on interpretation of data. Because it'll get thrown back, and I'm gonna play devil's advocate there just for a second. Thirty-two percent were proficient or above grade level. That meant 68 were not. And people out there who, they tend to throw that back in your face, how do we, how do we-
Counter it?
I don't know, counter, or how do we tell the good story of what's happening when you always get that thrown in your face, that, "Well, yeah, 30, whatever the number's 32%. Well, yeah, it should have been this, or it should have been that."
Hundred.
And it should have been a hundred, you know? And, and so, I, because I, you hear it, I hear it, well, that's, that's not good. Well, it, how do we counteract that, or how do we tell that? Change the dialogue is what I'm trying to do. How do we change that dialogue?
You know, I think that's a great question, and I probably would just start with, that you appreciate and understand that that's a valid point, and it's not good enough for us, and that's why we're working on it, one conversation at a time, one standard at a time, working through. We're aligning all of the resources for teachers. We're making the complex simple for teachers. So, the heart of a teacher, and remembering that you have 30 faces staring at you, it's really hard to be super differentiated if you didn't have the amazing resources that we have here. And so, I think you validate that statement for folks, and let them know that we are working on it every single day, and we're not gonna give up until the numbers are where we need them to be. As Dr. Jungman says, you know, "It's significant but not sufficient." It's one data point.
And that's what I'm trying, I'm not trying to say that-
It's one, yeah.
-critical of it, I'm-
But we want the kids to read. I totally agree with what you're saying.
And so, I just want to, because we hear it all the time.
Yeah. And to do the amazing projects that we just heard about, and all that you hear and there, we need those skills to be where they need to be. And so, how do we bring those forward? And, and I think you just validate it and say, "I agree, and I'm working on it."
And I think you gotta, you gotta throw out the other sides of the thing, and give our kids and our systems at different levels, at different times, and our job is to take them as far as we can. I've got three different kids that are, that enter at different levels, and tell the story, growth mindset around, every kid won't arrive at the same level at the same time. They won't also run the 100-meter dash, and they won't read at the same level at the same time. But we're going to grow them, and that's our job. If we're really, and we're gonna take them, and we're gonna grow them, and we're gonna intervene. We're gonna add some of our experiences. We're gonna do early childhood for those that miss the gaps, and those are all of our opportunities to try to get them on the same spot. But if we're looking at this NCLP mindset of everybody's efficiency jumping overboard at the same time, here's some of the understanding of the complexity of a learning environment. Doesn't mean we're not striving for it. We're making gains, and we're seeing the, the trend.
We want to see that.
I love data, but they throw it back in your face sometimes.
I know, darn it.
And so, it's, it's like you said, you gotta posture, you gotta frame it. You gotta frame the issue.
You try to simplify a lot of the work into very minimal aspects.
Are you gonna tell the Beauvin story? Is that your next slide?
Yes, yes.
Can I ask a question lower on this part? So, how do we, as a district, and maybe this is a building-level question, do we encourage teachers to share the two-page report you talked about? Because I've seen one, and it is pretty amazing. So, when does a parent see that? I mean, is that something that, I mean, at parent conferences, that a teacher will share with a parent? To answer that question that Bruce asked, and so, when do they get to see that?
It would definitely be building-specific. Yesterday at Truman, that is exactly how they were planning to do it, is to pair it up with the, that conference time with parents, and to just share that as an extension of the classroom. Some of them are using it through their weekly communications with parents, and kind of adding it into that, and reaching out to them that way. But I think that's something that, yes.
So, even though we give the schools the authority to distribute it however works best for them and their families, it is, I just want to be clear, that every parent who has access to this data is getting this report.
I cannot answer that completely, but would certainly look into what the, yeah, what kind of the delivery plan has been for each of the buildings.
And I guess that was kind of my question, what kind of encouragement do building principals get to ensure that their teachers share this with parents? Certainly, some parents wouldn't even want to ask.
Right, right.
Or that this is available.
Most. Because if you don't sit here and learn this, it doesn't matter how smart you are, you do not know.
Right.
Believe it.
That it even exists.
So what kind of-
They don't know what they don't know.
I mean, do you have a process where when you go out and you visit these buildings, do you encourage-
We have a process for what we cover and what we talk about. But I, I think the next part is really a collaborative, and I'm kinda looking at Dr. Dawson, a kind of a collaborative effort along with all of the departments to carry that forward. Would you agree?
Yeah, absolutely.
We could talk to leadership about must-dos and may-dos, I think is really what you're talking about.
Yes.
I think this personalized, and we talk about engaging relevant personnel. This is the most personalized academic profile we can provide for you with a snapshot. We also recognize that it encompasses these great units of staff that we just learned about today. So we can, we can talk about that.
And for a teacher's point of view, it's, it's there, right? You have it.
Yeah.
You just simply need to pull up that student score printed.
You could batch out your entire class at once.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, someone else had a question.
I'm good right now.
So I'm infusing into this story the additional kinda wraparound pieces that have been a part of the Focus School. This has been Jill Palmer's kinda focus on the focus effort with the others that support the Focus School. So you have the, the Title Department, you have Executive Director of Elementary Learning and Executive Director of Special Programs with Jay and Phyllis and Brian. And then there's a whole team of people that really support that effort. But we really wanted to showcase the successes that we are seeing and feeling as a part of that process. And so it kinda fits into three different areas. There's whole group, where the whole group comes together for a district-wide support system type of where you're sharing best practices. Folks like myself would come in and even talk about more of the details of attendance, improving reports that they might want to have at their building on a weekly basis in order to monitor things. The curriculum department would be there. So kind of a, you know, a whole group environment. At the building, the AAA team, that would be Jill and then the Title with, with Brian, they go and do specific data digs for each of those buildings. And so that is a very purposeful process that they're going through to ensure that they know their data, that they can get to their data, that they have a monitoring progress system in place. And then very individualized is where it's that one-on-one to improve that instructional leadership. And so there have been a sync-up of systems in terms of the supports that those additional buildings get, a sync-up of the strategies that the instructional coaches are using and how they're being utilized and that. And so it's just very exciting to see that synergy that's really growing from that. And that leads into kind of the timeline of things that really Jill and Brian have kinda led that effort. And that is the Focus School data digs. And I kinda highlight some of the words that you can see as the time has gone on. It starts back, it's like that principal feedback loop and really understanding what's going on in their building. By October, we had their map results and so we were able to dive into that and look at that in an item analysis approach to say, oh my goodness, you know, we have great things to celebrate, but at the same time, we have a deficit here and how are we gonna tackle that? And what are we gonna do for that? And that's kind of the wraparound of what we just talked about. And then really into November, we're analyzing those results by subgroup, by students that we wanna push through. And so we wanna make sure that below basic or moving through or moving proficient to advanced. I mean, we're really looking at that kid by kid to really understand how it works from a standard standpoint. And then what happens is the data takes care of itself. And that's kinda the approach that we're looking at this with. And by December, we're reviewing that process, we're capturing that feedback again and we're really talking about, how does this support model look as we move forward? And by then, it was like so energetic and exciting that it just flowed through to exciting times. And we really wanted to focus on Bowerman because it just can't be enough. I don't know if you had a chance to visit with them in the showcase room, but it, it just oozes out of them, the excitement that they have for this-
Total nerds.
And the ways they really, what did you say?
Nerds. And we say that lovingly.
I know. They certainly did say that. It's not a hit over the world, it's not a good thing. So when we start with the standards and we just weave through, you know, what are the priorities? And, and there's so much. And so again, making that complex simple, really understanding how to use our instructional time. What is good tier-one teaching look like? What that first level of learning, what does it look like? And then when do we need to kinda branch out into these other things? Refining those teaching practices so that the teachers feel very supported, talking about vertical teaming. As I talked about a moment ago, in those conversations, what you hear them say is a fourth grade teacher is digging into that data and seeing, oh, I got some deficiencies, but it really is kinda first and second grade. Great conversation starter to have a vertical conversation with the teachers and say, who teaches that? Who teaches that? Who teaches that? And come to find out, it kinda fell through the cracks, right? In some of the cases, not specific to Bowerman, but that's the conversations that are starting to happen, which are kinda neat. Celebrate, celebrate, celebrate. You know, there are, can't be enough said for those small victories that we're seeing in the, the steps along the way. And then looking ahead, continuing to have that small group instruction based upon results, talking about kids, talking about moving kids. Amazing data walls are happening in the buildings and really checking to see, checking for understanding. This particular building really has grasped onto the standards mastery. So what that means is we find deficiency, we have an intervention plan and then we test again to see if that kid has moved forward and that's what we're seeing, yes.
So you always do a fantastic job of being extremely positive. But I'm not quite as positive as you. And when I listen to this, it strikes me that it would be very complex to have the kinda conversations you're talking about around deficits without somebody feeling like you are saying that I am the problem or I am not good. And I say that within the mantra I always believe in. In any expertise, there are people who are great, mediocre, and no good. And so I actually think what you're describing sounds very difficult.
I would definitely say it's difficult work. And how you approach that conversation, you know, you start with that relationship and you're building that relationship. And then you're really, the relevance component, so you're bringing in the, the why, this is what we need to do. We have a big deficit here in your building, this is what we're seeing. Again, data's not emotional, so we're looking at it.
Yeah, but their reactions kinda be, I can't help but see, I'm just trying to picture you in the room with these people. They are, they are going to be emotional in response to it. Whether they're great, mediocre, or not. I just am having, I think this is a very difficult message. I'm so glad you're delivering it. I just think that that's the difficult part is how people accept that.
Yeah. Do you wanna chime in? I know you've been a part of some of those.
I would just tell you, what I've seen in Bowerman is a great example is that when the teacher can learn how to access those reports and identify what an individual student needs and then they can see that that is making a difference for that child. There's a teacher efficacy that says, I'm making a difference. So it makes that less complex, right? They start to believe in the process. When you can take the complex, make it simple and they can see the immediate impact, they are willing to come back to the table and continue to learn more to continue to move now. So I, I, I've seen the teachers believe in what they're doing here.
I have one follow. Like, so percentage-wise, we have a really big, massive school system here. And, you know, I view it every day from a different angle than you. And I'm not sure I'm seeing all this. So like, percentage-wise, how much of this are we doing at a time?
That's a great question. So I would tell you that what we put a lot of emphasis on is wraparound services. Cuz I know that it's about building capacity in leaders and building capacity in teachers to make it impactful for students. So we could talk about it all day long, but until we can build one conversation at a time with one leader at a time, with one teacher at a time and show them that they can make it this, these are, maximize these tools to help these children move in their growth. And I, and we could talk about it all day, but until we start building it one step at a time. And that's where I think Amy, that's where I think Mr. Hubbard and Title and Phyllis and Jay following up every week with principals and asking them those questions, that's the alignment that's starting to happen.
It's a process and we're working on it.
And I would say that, so when you talk about percentage, I'd say a hundred percent have had some sort of a personalized conversation.
Absolutely.
Where's the, where's the hundred percent? Where's the implementation? Has it gotten all the way down to the classroom yet? I don't think we're there yet, but we can do better. But I'm, I'm confident we're moving in the right direction.
So we're gonna come back to work tomorrow cuz we're not done.
Yeah, I didn't mean to, I don't wanna rain on your parade, but I really thought that part of it sounded difficult and I couldn't really get my head around it.
I think it is difficult and I think, another thing we talk about is kinda calming the chaos, again, the heart of the teacher, right? So be in the classroom and think about all of these things that are kinda coming at you and, and you're trying to deal with. And so we're going in with this servant support model where we're here to help, we're here to co-teach if you need it. Do you need, you know, what do you need? What do you need? What do you need? That's really what we're there to do in various forms, you know, whether that be through learning support team or through the AAA team. That's what we're there to do is to ensure that they feel like they have the confidence to move forward, that they have the tools that their students need in order to succeed. And so that's, that's what we're there to do. And, and some of them, you're right, are latching right on and some of them are saying, come back tomorrow, you know? But then we come back tomorrow. So, yeah, cuz we know it's the right thing to do for kids. Yeah, definitely the right thing to do. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just a couple of things. One is, I think Jill asked a great question cuz it is a difficult conversation to, to have. But the other thing I heard, and this is just from the context of talking to some of the Bowerman teachers and principal tonight, which is they were able to, they were thrilled to have the data. And I don't know that they were seeing it as making the judgment over whether they were good or bad or-
Right.
It was just simply, and they were mining into it, going back and individualizing and looking at, they could go back to attendance records, was the kid gone during that segment that was taught?
That's some of the work that Jill's done, is try to bring some typical data pieces to go there.
So they were just like, they appeared to me in, in the few minutes that I was with them, but they were just thirsty for the data to be able to mine. And then it's not just a sweep of the whole class's scoring, whatever, but they can go in and pinpoint, cuz we know that this is a, we know that kids come to school with all different kinds of needs. And so then they're able to pinpoint what are those needs? It's not just about the teaching that's happening in the classroom, it's how, I mean, what that kid brings or doesn't bring in order to succeed. So they were thrilled to hear that and I was thrilled to know that they're taking the time cuz you know how much time that takes? That's a lot of time to dig into that data, to individualize that learning. And so I just, I just commend them for the work they're doing and I hope that they're a best practice for the district to learn from. So that's, that's amazing.
And that principal support is so key to the success too because the, as I said, you know, in a lot of these models, the principal is right there with that conversation with teacher and that, and they also have that servant support system in place to say, what do you need? Do you need some time off in an afternoon to, to kinda spend some time digging into this and kinda, you know, block out the noise so that you can really look and see what you need to do? And in some cases, that is a fit, that's what they need. And so being able to support that effort is just amazing for them, so.
The other thing, I know that some of the data, it allows us to spend time looking at deficits. But I also hope that with the individualized data, I, I would love to hear some presentations where teachers come back and tell us how they're using where students strengths.
Yeah.
Where they see their strengths and where they're able to grow in that area. And you're always gonna be managing the areas-
Yeah.
-that don't come natural to you. But, but, but how can the data not just show us where we need to improve upon, but where we need to build upon? Because there's real potential there.
And I'm glad you mentioned that. That actually came up in the conversation yesterday because, as I described to you before, Lexia to Reading Plus is kind of a tipping point for further comprehension skills. So when you're talking to a fourth grade teacher, it's somewhere in the fourth and fifth grade zone that this could start to happen to kids. But what you'll see is they may have accelerated comprehension skills, but they're still lacking, we'll say, in vocabulary. And the system can provide that type of very discreet data for, data mining for the teacher. So they're not having to kinda filter through that. And that was in a very powerful conversation yesterday because how do I continue to push forward with the kid? And, you know, Dave says, you know, you can always add like a, you know, kind of a vocab wall, you know, and start to infuse that into your classroom to really increase the vocabulary of your classroom. And it, little stuff like that, but we just know that it's gonna pay dividends because it's just those little tweaks one at a time that really starts to move the whole thing in a different direction. So, yeah, very good.
Yeah, just real briefly, I, I really wanna celebrate sort of Bowerman, including a Focus School here because everybody at a Focus School, and even, every, I mean, teachers are not in it for publicity, they're surely not in it to get rich. But they know when that list of schools in a particular order is gonna be published, page one against, above the fold, right? And so they know people are watching. But on one hand, they notice it, on the other hand, they don't care, right? Because it's about kids.
It's the right word, right.
And yet, we'll get up tomorrow and we'll come in tomorrow and we'll come in earlier and we may stay on that list for a little while, but they're working really, really hard. Now, I'm, I sort of focused on, okay, the deficit here, et cetera, et cetera. But I have to believe everybody at those schools, they could be doing something else, right? But they're at those schools because they wanna close that gap. And they're working as hard as they can and coming in early, staying late.
And that's why I wouldn't highlight the growth part of that story because we know that they are working and moving kids forward. That is definitely happening and we can see that. But then how do you continue to move that forward is to kinda look to see how to build that up.
It's the same difference in a, in a somewhat different context that was raised between growth and proficiency.
And we're moving on.
I don't know what you're talking about.
That's your second one in your cap. No more for you. No more for you.
No more for you, Charlie.
Here is definitely a mid-year celebration. So we are in, these are using January 2017 numbers as, as I said before. Moving attendance is like boiling the ocean. It takes a lot of effort to show any sort of a progress moving forward. We have put a lot of effort. Jill has spent a tremendous amount of time with the supports of the buildings that support attendance. So whether that be the Coordinator of Site Intervention, which is known as a CSI, whether it be working with the attendance advisors, there's just a, a whole variety of folks that support that effort. And Jill has really kinda gone, again, individualized with that group of people to say, what additional information do you need in order to move this, you know, to the place that you need it to be? And, and whether that's tweaking a report, literally coming back and making that happen. It, it's just exciting, you know, because they'll say, oh my gosh, I've asked for years for this. And it's like, oh no, we can do that, no problem. And it just is a wonderful look on their face to say, well, I just wasn't asking the right person, I guess. But anyway, this is a celebration. It's sometimes hard to hold on to, but it's still a good, good thing that we're moving in the right direction. The other thing we wanna celebrate is the increase in the graduation rate efforts that we talked about last time. So this has been a collaborative effort of several of us, Dr. Dawson, Nicole, myself, Rhonda Mammon, who's the Director of Counseling, Lynn Schur, who works with the homeless liaison role. And what we started to, to, to talk about were how do you re-engage students? How do you bring kids back into the system? And what we learned is a lot of times there are barriers to entry. And if there was anything that we could do to lower those barriers of entry, we were doing it. We were gonna figure it out. And so what we started to do is working with the building, again, that site intervention kinda team, collaborate, calibrate processes. You know, when you are a large system, sometimes things can look a little different at buildings. And how do we all start to systematize that so that we can leverage against that effort? Instead of kinda creating our own very unique situation at one building in terms of dropout prevention? And, and really having those great conversations, listening to feedback, listening to the kids. When you listen to the stories of students who have dropped out of our system, it's heartbreaking. You would do anything, you would climb any mountain to fix that after you hear those stories. And that's really where we were at. I mean, it was just heart-wrenching stories and reconnecting those students. Through Rare Breed is one example where we physically have gone and hung out and tried to, you know, drum up business, if you will, for education. And, and kids know when they get to that point that, that they don't wanna check the box, you know, dropout. They wanna check the box that they graduated. And so what can we do to help with that? And so by doing that, Nicole, Dr. Lomen has been able to really offer a lovely menu of options for virtual course access. And so with that, we think this one's funny, but we call it the traditional virtual. And then there's credit recovery and there's credit acquisition. And this is really kind of starting, again, to systematize something that we can offer to students who have potentially failed their classes and we're gonna bring them back in and so they go through the credit recovery type process. These are standards-based modules that have been developed by the amazing team in the SPS online office. And, and it's, it's just an amazing opportunity that we're able to really wanna take it to a much greater scale than where we are today. We've re-engaged twenty-one students so far. Sounds like a small number, but to us, it's amazing. We're very excited about that.
That's this year.
Yeah, this year, yeah.
That's huge. Don't say that. Look at me having to correct you on the-
Just this semester? Yeah, Nicole, go ahead.
That's at the beginning of the year.
See how big a number?
Yeah.
And that's what I think is really in this whole, with attendance, recovery, whatever, is we don't, we're not looking at it on a macro level. We can get wrapped up in the ninety by ninety and all that, but we're looking at it on a kid level.
Kid by kid. What's your story?
And that's what's important, the starfish, that's right, the starfish story. All I got, if I say one kid, it's worth everything we did. And so I, and I really appreciate you guys working it from that angle or aspect of, it, it's about the child and not about the numbers. It's about the child. And, and you, you don't see that everywhere. That's when you get wrapped up in data. That's not what's important. What's important is that the kid.
I think the kid's story is, is the whole part that I, yeah, absolutely love. So, so that, that's happening and it's just gonna keep getting better. And one kid at a time. You know, one dropout recovery at a time, but more importantly, a proactive approach, as I talked about, the effort even with Jill, that she's working at the buildings. So proactively, we're looking at reports-
I'm like, what are you doing, Jill?
About risk to make sure, to make sure that students, that we're catching them before they go too. So we, we don't want it to only be a reactive approach, but I think you have to have both when you want to make great improvements. And that's what we're really, really set on doing, so. With that, if you have further questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Or any of my friends in the room.
Amy, I think we've heard a little bit about what's going on with Rare Breed.
Amy, I think we've heard a little bit about what's going on with Rare Breed. How is the, just give us a little story. What's the reception like, the students, the students we have there that are dropped out? So, I mean, who can speak to that?
My friend.
Yeah, I think one thing that we have to remember with the kids we're re-engaging is we're working with extremes. So we don't always want to think of them as students who would have had deficits in their education. We've met students who are brilliant, who were Ivy students. The system failed them some way, who are bright minds that we want to keep in our community. So we have those extremes. And then we have students who literally, when we ask them, what are you doing tonight when you leave here? They're sleeping under a bridge in a sleeping bag. So if we can give them a Chromebook and give them a hotspot, we really feel like we can change their future. And so that's, those are kind of the two extremes that we're working in right now. But the Rare Breed situation, we literally just meet with them wherever we can. So we've met at coffee shops, we've met at the Rare Breed Center itself, which has its limitations due to its hours. So, you know, we'll meet them outside on the sidewalk, but then we have to go find, you know, a place to sit. So, I mean, we're meeting them, we set up a bus stop one day. So it's wherever we need to go to meet with them. We look at their transcript and we say, what do you need to do today to move forward? One of the things we found is really successful is tying them to a mentor. So we have teachers in our system who are working with these students, following up with them, tutoring them, and making that personal connection. Just giving them a Chromebook and a hotspot won't do it all. But connecting them to an adult who cares about them and is following up has made it different. So I think that's some of the work we're doing. I just wanted to remind you, we have extremes on both ends that we're continuing to work with and provide resources for.
So how many mentors do we have?
So right now, I have three mentors who are working with our students. Some of the re-entry students that we've worked with are still engaged with our high school counselor. So there's some work going on there. But three outside of their buildings completely. So these are students who aren't going to go back to Central High School. They tell us stories that you can't take a shower and you walk in with your life on your backpack, school is an uncomfortable place to be.
We have a long term that's in the back of our minds somewhere, just give us time.
So Lynn Schur has been amazing. She helps us connect with the kids, but then beyond that, finding that caring adult has been a huge piece of this.
Have we ever done anything like this before?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge.
Sometimes with these things come growing pains and I think, you know, when you make extreme situ, when you're helping extreme situations, you have to take measures that kind of push the system a little bit. But we're doing that. And I think, I would say, Dr. Dawson has removed a lot of barriers for us that we faced. But to my knowledge, we haven't engaged at this level with these students. And word is starting to spread. So what happens are these students work in a network. So they find out where to get food from each other, where to get shelter from each other, and now they're finding out, I can get, go back to school. We are helping kids that were four credits away from graduation. Four credits. Wow. One semester away and they would have been done. We have three students that are like that, that were just a mere days away from graduation who left our system.
Which I would say then informs our proactive story, right? Because we're learning these stories and then we're going back into the system and saying, hey, everybody, let's make sure that these kiddos, when they're this, you know, like how can we pair that student up within the building? And how can we have at-risk monitoring happening so that we're not allowing that to happen? I think the most profound moment is when we walked out of Rare Breed and Mike said, you know, a lot of times we talk about, we're creating the college and career path for success for students, but in some ways, we too can create the homeless population if we're not careful. And it was like, whoa, that was heavy. You know, I mean, because it's true. These kids were in our system and it failed them. And we have to own that and try to help them.
It's far more complex than that. We need a washing machine and a dryer and a shower. And don't think I don't know it.
Well, and I think one of the things first thing is we need less judgment. I mean, at the end of the day, these kids have stories that, you know, sometimes they walk in a building and they have an immediate judgment right back to them. When they meet with us, I believe everything they tell me. I'm not judging them, I'm not questioning them, they are where they are and we're going to, great, now we're going to move forward. So I think for me, that's a huge piece of the work.
That we do. It's okay, we're still asking.
He's a part of this.
Are you to the point where there's a need to recruit mentors? Or are you going to see how this works and then extend or recruit mentors?
I think at this point, I have a list of teachers who've already stepped forward. So just like word of mouth spreads among kids.
How many are on your list?
So I have nine teachers who've reached out and said.
I mean, they're not going to get anything for this.
Right? So I think they have a passion for homeless youth, they have a passion for the stories of these students. So I haven't had to recruit yet, but I mean, if he gets that.
That'd be a great problem, right?
We should recognize them sometime.
Should.
Couple thoughts. One is I can't help but go back to the Glendale High School gym when Dr. Jungman did the Jenga. Somebody in the room knows the Jenga rah rah for the professional development teachers at the beginning of school and talked about, had names of people in our district. They might know one fact.
Actually, I have a story about that.
We have a story about that.
I know. So I can give one.
You better go and clean those.
We have a student. We have a student. We were engaging with through the Rare Breed, and I won't say his name out loud.
But it was distinct.
It's a distinct name. You wouldn't notice it. And so in a senior leadership, last month, John asked us to bring, there are Jenga pieces again as a reconnect or have that person's name in mind. And the principal said, I have this student, I saw her at McDonald's, I actually picked her name up because I remember being her elementary teacher. And when I saw her name, I knew it because it's very distinct. That day, we already had a meeting, I already had a meeting planned to put her back in school through the Rare Breed program. So the fact that she connected, had the Jenga piece on her table, we re-engaged her that day, had her re-enrolled, and she's four credits away from graduation. So.
We all felt like we were a part of something bigger than ourselves.
I mean, that's a big story.
Yes, yes. And so I can't help but think you and others are doing some things that may not have been on the job description that you, you know, signed on or whatever.
I probably didn't say it, I was sitting at a bus stop.
Exactly, yes. But I think it goes back to just a moment, to inspiring a gym full of people with a simple but creative Jenga game and then to see the dividends that we are. So I want to thank Dr. Jungman for that vision. Because I asked you the question, because I didn't know, is this something that we normally do? And no, it's not. So we're doing risky courageous things and it's really exciting and I can imagine there'll be some additional resources needed in different areas to cover new ways that we can get these students to completion.
I think, you know, this is the middle of the report, it's about data, right? But we've changed the game to make it just about personalizing the data.
That's right.
And so we're not looking at it as, oh, hey, we're in, we're not doing a great job of main idea. We're talking about Billy and Johnny and Sally.
That's right.
And then we're trying to meet the needs of every individual building and their principals and their teachers. So we're trying to personalize this approach to moving, to closing the achievement gap that we all look at and say, that's not good enough. But we know that, we know that just saying, hey, everybody's going to get main idea and we're going to double down on that for professional learning is not it. It has to be down to the individual student level. So that's one half of the equation, right? It's this personalized piece. The other half of that equation is what you saw in the room today, which was engaging, relevant, hands-on, experienced learning. When the student over here at Glendale was showing me his new speaker and the students were showing me how they're using their Lexia data to move their I-ready score or the Campbell Conda story. We have to continue to develop curriculum and curriculum units that are embedded in experiences because we know that is just as important as personalizing this individual data story. So I got to think, it's always a weird time, right? Because I think it is significant work we're doing, but it's not the only work we're doing. And I don't want us to get going down that path of keep going, keep going. Keep going, keep personalizing, but don't forget about building up this half of the equation, either about experiences and integrating the curriculum and making it relevant instead of just isolated one thing at a time. So both of those things marry each other very well. We have great leaders of Allison's team going down that path, Nicole's team trying to build out this virtual side, and you have this amazing person, Amy, to help us connect all the dots. And we have leaders then who are just trying to continue the conversation. So amazing people, make it personal. And I'm really thankful for that. So great job.
My question is to ask you a whole question. Based on being included in next round, all with hands-on learning, and then what we saw in there, is it really transferring for a student to an I-ready? Is that transferring there? Or did they really care what that I-ready does? Because when I talk to some Jared students and they're showing me their computer and running that thing around, do they, do they really care what they, what I want to know is, these are, I know these aren't alternative facts, but they may be things that are not, you know, they're not.
Are we measuring?
Are we measuring? Are they, is it still measuring? We have had that question. Is I-ready doing that?
I would tell you that I think kids want to set goals, they want to see their progress. Now, if they've met some magical number, I don't think they really care about that, to be honest. I think they want to see that they're progressing down the path. And that's what I think our teachers recognize and honor.
I don't know if it's.
And they also want to create, right? If they want to do some of the stuff you saw. And those things are the things that we always talk about that are hard to measure. They don't necessarily go hand in hand. And to Mike's point, these are significant measures. They matter, right? But they're not maybe the most motivating for kids. This is what creates the engagement, the motivation and the relevance. This is what helps them get better at that too. So we've got to draw the connection. I don't think they're mutually exclusive, but we've got to do both and do both really well. And unfortunately, when we roll up the scores on accreditation and we roll up the scores on IMSA, but we roll up the scores.
To the community, to the other.
That stuff doesn't get represented very well and that's why we have to tell those stories very, very well. So it is very complex.
And I think the assessment piece is something that in education you've struggled with forever. I mean, when I say forever, I can call it myself forever. Because, I mean, as long as I.
Evaluation, assessment, whatever.
And the perfect example I can give is I had a student that scored 36 on his ACT. I mean, very bright young man. He scored below basic on his math test. And I remember I sat and had the conversation with him, what is going on here? That's not important, I've already got my college scholarships, I'm already done, you know, and ready to go on. So, and I know that's at a different level, that's at the high school level, but again, assessment is only, I mean, we want to know that they're progressing. We want to know that they're doing better and getting closer to that grade level. But then on the other hand, it's only as good as the time and attention that the child or the student puts into wanting to do well on that. And I think when they're little, little, they want to do well better for their teachers. When they get to high school, eh, not so much. They want to do well for themselves.
That's where it has to be relevant, right? It's got to be a relevant learning moment and the assessment has to be relevant and my proof has to be relevant.
And if it's not.
Yeah. Then my motivation might be a little bit.
And I'm like Jerry, when people do throw out, just, well, how can, you know, as a board member, what do you think about only this percent of your students, only, you know, thirty percent of your kids are reading on very low level, that means this many are not. I always want to say, yes, just like Amy said, we're not happy about that. We would like for that to be much, much better. But we also know all the factors that are related to students doing well on an assessment and is it really tell where they are. And I want to invite those people, come and go walk through some classrooms with me. And if you leave at the end of that time and you don't think there's learning going on, and just like what we experienced in this room, it is so hard to assess things like some of the stuff we saw in there. So while it's very important and we want to continue to see, and I enjoyed seeing at least the progress that's going on from beginning of the year to middle of the year, and I'm hoping that when we get to that end of the year, we see another bump. Because that means we're, as a system, our students are progressing. But I think that we could pull out bunches or groups of students, we might see some of them starting here and they're already way up here. Because, so we're looking at all of our students. We don't just get to look at those you might want to show us tonight. We're looking at all. So as long as we keep seeing that beginning of year, middle of year, end of year progress occurring is, I think, important.
And we'll pair that up.
Important to me. And what is this third, this is certainly second year to give.
The full K8.
Okay, so we're really young.
Yes.
I'm looking at the assessment, bringing that to us. But a great report, what we asked for. So we're getting what we've been asked for.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay. Okay, superintendent's update.
Awesome. That was dense, so, and I really had a dense report, so I'm going to try to do my best to keep it lighter, but there are some dense aspects to it, I apologize. But I'll, I'll try to roll through it quickly. So first thing, relatively light, you've got some things at your desk, just awareness for Explorer enrollment is beginning to start. And here are a couple of the tools that our parents and our kids are engaging in. I love the awesome text I got from a patron Friday night that said, my child is literally crying because there's so many great offerings, they don't know what to take. And they don't know what to not, what they have time for. So it's awesome that our team's built up such big experience. In addition, you also have an informational flyer regarding the bond issue presentation that is being scheduled across the district, internal and external audiences. The website is now live. FAQs and those kinds of things will be added as we continue to progress, but there are information brochures you can take with you as well as exploring information, so you can share with friends and colleagues.
Was this, was there a high school brochure different than last year?
There was not. Last year, it was all kind of one stop, so now we've.
This is very nice.
Or feedback from secondary kids, teachers.
Didn't want it to be elementary looking.
This way. Kids like this, elementary middle, maybe high school prefer something more of this, more knowledge approach. So great upgrades from the communications team, building a great product to get the word out. So those things are before you. Obviously, in more depth, there's a lot of stuff going on at state and national level when it comes to education. We're probably all well aware right now and based on some of the comments. So we have a new Secretary of Education at federal level, disappointing, I do believe, in most people's eyes at this table as well as mine regarding her background and philosophies that have been played out in public policy and advocacy for years in being the Chief Education Officer for the United States. So we're yet to know what the consequences of that or how that will play out, but we will stay tuned and stay engaged. We do know that there are certain things, and I think this is just an awareness, and I know you get your MSBA updates and I hope you're reading them a lot right now because the world is changing a little bit on education policy at the state level and also we're getting a lot of budget updates. So let's start with the easy one, the budget. We overall heard really positive news considering the state's budget situation for K-12 education. And this was a kind of a landmark start for Governor Brightens and where his support for K-12 funding would be, really held the formula flat and protected it in this environment. We'll actually see a slight bump, that's a gaming projection in the formula, see a Prop C potential increase. Now, that's a dedicated revenue, that's not a formula, that's a dedicated revenue, so there's not a lot of choice in that, but there is a budgeted increase there. There are some other increases in early childhood. Some of those are required by law as case law in those aspects, but we do overall feel good about that. We did see a significant reduction in transportation and all general revenue that has been put into the transportation budget historically has been pulled out. That's about 30% of what's left, and there's not much that's left. If you've been around the table for a while, you know, transportation just continues to decrease and decrease. And then it'll go down, and it'll go back up a little bit, and then it'll go down again. So, 30% is going to be in that, you know, $600,000, $700,000 range probably impact on SPS, but it, again, just decreases the contribution that the state's making towards our transportation budget. That's the overall scope of the budget as we know it, and we know that's just step one. Now, it falls into the House, and the House will run it through all of their traps and approve, and then it will shift to the Senate. And by May, we'll have a budget recommendation that will hopefully go to the governor's desk for approval. But we, at least we have a good starting point, and it's not a crisis mode when it comes to cuts and those things, when it comes to K-12. So, we'll monitor and engage throughout the entire process, and next week is MSBA's legislative forum, so a piece of that will be budget and a piece of it will be policy. So, let's shift to policy. A few important pieces of policy that are being discussed right now that I just want to give you a quick synopsis of what I feel the major threats are and maybe some of the concerns, and I know you see a lot of those. But number one is Senate Bill 32, and that really focuses on what is now referenced to as an education savings account or an empowerment account. That is a voucher. Call it what you want, but it's a voucher bill, and it allows a tax, new tax credit program would be created when we're already significantly underfunded as a state, and that $25 million account would be available for students to apply to, to take the state adequacy dollar amount up to that dollar amount, which is about $6,200, and choose how they use it. Private education, homeschooling environments, they get the choice. And then, the way that it's become an education savings account at the end of their career, if they did this for multiple years or even one year, and they didn't spend everything, now they can take that with them to higher ed. So, that's, that's where it's went from a voucher to a tuition tax credit. Now, it's an education savings account that can carry forth into higher ed. But bottom line, it's a voucher plan that allows public dollars to form in private school as well as other environments that aren't our K-12 system. So, Andy Emery is the sponsor of the bill. I testified in opposition when it was in the Senate hearing. It didn't even go to the Education Committee. It went to the Governmental Reform Committee, which seems like an odd place for an education bill. And some changes already put in place that even draw significant concern that the testimony that night, that day was 25 million is the starting point, but all of the proponents were saying this will never be enough.
Yeah.
It had a cost of living adjustment in it. That's already been changed to a 10% infla, I think a 20% inflator every year, and then all you have to do is change the number, right? Based on the need that's out there. So, significant concern, there is, there's a lot of other states that have passed this legislation. You see that number growing and growing over time. And the big concern, obviously, is when you do that, that's a less resource for the system. There are a lot of students that could take advantage of that that aren't in public education, including entering systems. I think the current bill calls for them, students to have to been in the system for 100 days prior to taking advantage of it or being entering kindergarten. Whether or not that language stays in it through until the end, we're not sure. So, education savings account have significant concern, I think, and we'll see how that plays out. The original bill when it was filed was directed at special needs students, and the governor spoke out in favor of it directing at certain populations. The bill quickly flipped to all students. It really had zero accountability provisions in its first, first version and second version. The third version has been dropped as of now. They've added some quasi-accountability that all these kids that would take advantage of this would have to take some kind of national, national test, which would be reported to a database, and then they would use that to compare it to public schools, basically. But not a math test, not a...
It's not accountability.
Yeah, I was like, so, toward what end?
What's that?
As I said, quasi-accountability, right? They have to take a test, right, and then they have to get this reported. So, that was a lot of the testimony at the hearing, was there's got to be an accountability component, so they wanted to add something, but it's really not relevant to accountability, we'd say. So, that's ESAs. That's Senate Bill 32. It has passed out of the Reform Committee and is available to go to the floor at any time, so it can be put on the Senate calendar and taken up for debate. So, important for us to stay engaged with our senators through that process, and then it would have to slide over to the House at some point. Second one that is of significance, and Jerry can speak to this. He testified in opposition to the charter expansion bill, House Bill 634, that would bring charters statewide. Currently, charters are limited to Kansas City, St. Louis, as well as unaccredited districts, provisionally accredited districts. And public schools can offer charters, even though none have taken advantage of that that I'm aware of at this point. But this would go statewide charter and allow those chartering agencies and basically, it's still a public school. It's chartered by a university or a chartering agency of some sort, and then they're able to pull the state actually target for any kid from the District of Residence to support that student. So, that would be a $6,200 shift, potentially on a budget for any student that left our system to go into charter. Unfortunately, when one kid leaves, we, our costs don't incrementally decrease by one 25th of a teacher or whatever. It takes large scale to be able to scale down costs when people leave. And most of the data that we've been pressing, passing on to legislators is incredibly mixed when it comes to charter. There have been a lot of charters open and closed since 1999, I think, when the law was enacted in Missouri. And when that happens, all of those students come right back to public education because there's not another seat potentially. And $600,000 has been spent on those schools that have closed over, over those times. And then, if you looked at the performance of the charters that are existing, they're not accredited because the state board doesn't have accrediting authority. They have ability to work with the charter sponsor, but they don't have the ability to unacredit because of the freedom and the flexibility that's in the charter environment. So, when you look at the performance, if you looked at the accreditation level or the APR scores, even though we believe that they're not the only thing, even in that environment, half of them, I think, would be below full accreditation. They'd be either provisional or less. So, significant concerns in that bill. I would tell you one good piece of news I spent...
Please do.
Hey!
We're ready.
I spent some time, and it's not just me, but we have collectively spent some time, I think, as a superintendent's association, teachers' associations, school boards' associations, with both the bill sponsor and other people in leadership to try to slow that bill down. That bill was expected to be voted on out of the House Education Committee this week, I think even today or tomorrow, but they delayed that because of some good dialogue about making a better bill. I don't know if we can stop the bill, but we can certainly make a better bill, and that's our goal right now. I spent some time with a representative this weekend chatting about the bill, and here were some of our thoughts about how you could use this bill to do good things for education instead of potentially really causing damage to districts and without a great track record of performance. And she seemed to be in agreement with a lot of that. So, we'll see where it lands when we're done. That's the second major one. The third one, and this is taking shape in a lot of different places, currently it's, I would just encapsulate it as virtual school expansion. House Bill 138 is one. There's one on the Senate side also. I can't remember the number off the top of my head. That's a very limited virtual expansion. It's still working through MOVIP and allowing, you know, kind of some opportunities for kids to take up to two courses online every, every semester with certain permissions. We already do some more of that, to be honest. We're kind of a step ahead of that game with some of the course on work and offerings of the FRR plans. The real concern is when that turns into a virtual charter for profit from out of state, and that's a game changer. And I think that one actually has the biggest threat as compared to these three, because roll up a BSAs will take a little bit, even though people would access it very quickly. Roll up a charter expansion, it's a great bill. It'll take a little bit of time to kind of build and to create partnerships, make that go. Roll up a virtual charter will take about 10 seconds for the providers that are out of state to flip the switch and buy marketing airtime, because I told the story when I was at Liberty, I saw it play out in Kansas, and every night on TV, it was the virtual, Kansas Virtual Academy. It costs you nothing, and it was heavily marketed dollars from a Wall Street company that owns the virtual academy with a profit motive and not a purpose motive and focused on student performance. And the data, the results behind what they've delivered would echo that. So, we're having significant conversations at the state level with legislators before these bills, because there's another bill out there. It hasn't been fully dropped, but it's the same bill that's been out in the past. It's full open enrollment virtual charter access, which means $6,200 would leave every student that followed. And we know that a big chunk of that is profit, and a big chunk of that goes to marketing, and that is proven out over and over again in school, in states that have expanded. We believe that virtual is a part of the world, is a part of what we're doing. It's how we're reaching different kids. And course access is an issue, and the governor has talked about course access as a part of the state of the state as well as other aspects of speeches that he's given, and it's a true issue. We've got a lot of rural districts that can't get access to high-quality physics, chemistry teachers, and programming, and maybe AP courses or IB or dual credits. So, what do we do to bridge that gap? And it's not just rural. There are some in even urban areas, and there's some efficiencies in that process. But we believe that that can only happen when it's high-quality and it's legally best delivered by Missouri educators for Missouri kids and not for-profit virtual academies delivered from somewhere else with a different motive. So, anything that we can do to help shape that conversation, we are moving, and we've actually started some just behind the scenes, and I've shared this with several leaders in the system and shared with you tonight, that several superintendents from the region, the GoCSD partnership, have come together, a small population, to talk about what could a regional virtual academy look like so that we can solve the course access issue for our schools as well as small rural schools in this area and say that public education can fix this. We don't need for-profit providers from out of state teachers. Even though they would have a Missouri license, that doesn't mean that they would ever step foot in our state to deliver that content. We can solve this issue, and we can do it better and more efficiently and return a greater product for our kids. So, a lot of conversations happening regionally. We're collecting data about how we could ramp that up, our work in the virtual space as a district, I think, puts us as a leader in that conversation, not only in the region, but also statewide. We have as many or more courses than any other district in the state already built. We feel like we could roll up a full enrollment program as well as expanded offerings in a relatively quick fashion if the state would give the school districts the opportunity to build the right model. So, just want you to know that we're trying to be proactive in an environment that may cause us to move quicker than possible, and most important thing is communicating to our legislators. Keep it vocal, keep it in school board's hands, and don't send Missouri hard earned dollars out of state to provide low-quality virtual instruction to a for-profit provider. So, reiterate that message for me when you talk, and I'm saying it in every space that I get the opportunity to say it. Couple other bills. Good news, House Bill 97, visiting scholars bill is an opportunity to help with some certification issues potentially for like GoCaps teachers statewide. So, working with a representative to move that bill forward, and so far, so good on that, as well as some other local legislators. Senator Jill Lawson spent two hours with us on Friday visiting GoCaps classrooms, wants to help move that forward, and also wants to potentially use that as a model for his some economic development bills that he's working on because of how well it connects the community to business partners and kids to their future careers. So, there are great, good things going on and really good conversations, but there's a lot out there that could change the game for public education in the state of Missouri, so we have to be highly in tune and highly engaged at this point. Jerry, you've been a part of many of those additional conversations. Anything that you would add on legislative front?
I don't know. I can't remember who said it, but somebody, I wrote it down, talked about calming the chaos. And that's exactly what we got right now, is chaos to some degree, and figuring out how do we calm this. Most of it gets back to accountability, and it's, it's a matter of doing something different, even if it's wrong. I mean, sometimes you get the impression that's just, I don't care what it is, whether it's good or bad, just do something different without a lot of forethought and, and research into it. And it's, things are going to happen. I don't think we can stop the snowball. It's damage control. What can we do to take the best? If there is, from Jill's standpoint, if there is a silver lining in this, there's a whole lot of discussion about new and creative ways to do things for public schools, trying to figure out how do we do this ahead of the game? How do we get ahead of the curve so that rather than it getting stuffed down our throat, how can we be more creative and open to some of these new ideas and new, new things that are out there that we can do just as well, if not better than? I mean, it's back to, you can't serve two masters, profit or kids. And I don't think you, that's a difficult decision that these, that some of them are doing, and I just don't believe that they do that, and focusing on the kids. It is the bottom, follow the money most of the time, and so...
On that front, I mean, the dumpster fire that is for-profit higher ed ought to be a good illustration of what's on the other end.
I was thinking that, too. There's a lot of evidence to show that this is a failed enterprise.
Dumpster fire may be a little...
That was extreme, my friend, but that's how you roll.
Yeah. You're, you're on tonight, Charles. You're on tonight.
So, so, in your conversations with legislators, how many, how many of them, what, what portion of them seem to come to the conversation with a foregone conclusion that innovation can only happen outside of public education?
I'd say local legislators don't have that battle on a daily basis, right? It's, it's, but we are not represented on the House Education Committee in any way. She's only a Southwest Missouri representative on that. And on Senate Education Committee, there's one, but it's not an advocate for public education. So, regionally, I feel like they believe that our schools do innovate and they research and they do do these things. Doesn't mean they need to be sparked occasionally with some innovative thoughts, and there may be ways to shape the charter to help do that, right, within public schools, which is to really work around things. But, but statewide, that's not the mantra, right? The only, the philosophy, and it's not the only philosophy, but the overwhelming philosophy is choice drives change and innovation, and we're just about status quo. And if you were at the hearing and testified, then we're just protectors of status quo.
Thank you.
It would be as, as would I, right, and we're lumped into the protectors of status quo.
You know, we're the largest district.
And I think a lot of it is choice. They don't really care what it's called, whether it's charter, virtual, whatever. They're wrapped up in choice. Let parents have the final say-so in what they're, where and how their kids go to school. And, you know, I, you were talking, you know, charter schools specifically, you know, half of them would be unaccredited right now if they were actually have accountability. And so, the argument that I, that I've got is, yeah, there's failing schools in St. Louis, Kansas City. All schools got some that don't do as well. So, the, there's thinking is, just put a charter school where that's, quote, failing school is. Well, you got a 50/50 chance that that failed, the charter school's going to fail too. So, do I sit...
Just 50/50?
Huh?
Just 50/50? No, seriously.
No, I know. Well, 50 of them are failing now, so I'm just taking that as odds, that half of them, you got a 50/50 chance it's going to be a school better than the one that they're attending now. I don't like those odds, because basically you dilute the public school. You dilute somewhat the charter school because you're splitting resources, and so now I've got two failing schools, or two that are not. Why not put those resources in a public school, let's figure out how to fix that in a new and creative way? And so, it's, a lot of it is just hell bent to do this direction because they can right now.
And I think that's our message to people, and I've said it in testimony. We're not afraid of choice. We actually have a culture.
Absolutely. I tried to tell them, so we, we already have choice.
Right. And we're working to expand that as we think about how we do our offerings or our programming. But there's, there's choice for choice sake, and there's also sister legislation. So, if you look at, right next to Senate Bill 32, it's Senate Bill 33, which would, sponsored by the same senator, that would limit, that would create an A through F rating for every school building in the state based on a limited set of factors, including, as the number one indicator, just the proficiency rates. So, don't care about growth, but just the proficiency rates of the kids in each one of those buildings. And we know exactly what that would show us, is the economics of each school, right?
And I believe it's just public schools.
Yep, it is.
It's only public schools that get the rating. Nobody else.
So, we'll open up the ESAs with zero accountability while we rate the public schools A through F with a rudimentary measure that will only identify what we already know, right, and damage public schools that are working to grow. So...
I can't take the whole one more.
Sorry.
Can we go flicker the lights?
But it would be, it would be the schools that are committed to the status quo that put a Chromebook in the hand of the kid in a sleeping bag under a bridge, right? That would be the status quo that we're defending.
And that's the story that they don't get, and that's why the local legislators are, I mean, they know the stories. They've been in our classrooms. They walk our halls, right? And for the most part, they understand what we're trying to accomplish. Doesn't mean the system's going to need to change. We do need to inspire some change in places, and we need to continue to grow, but this isn't the right thing, right? And that's why we have to come.
Thank you for that update.
Sorry.
Yep.
That is probably enough.
Well, not me. I'm fine. Keep going.
Pile it on.
Let's call it good. How about that? I think that covered everything on my...
It just gets a little...
It's a lot of...
More comments. And I'm sure, I mean, I'm thinking with what we saw at 4:30 this evening with our private-based learning, I know each of you have thrown in a few things about that already this evening, so if you want to comment, go right ahead. So, we're at 8 o'clock, and we're going to wrap this up here in a few minutes, so if you'll just take a minute or two, and if you want to talk about what great things you saw, that would be great. So, Jerry? I always look at you. I think you're around.
No, I was going to go somewhere else.
Oh, did you say you passed?
I had another thing to talk about.
Oh, okay.
That was followed this, but it's a positive thing.
Okay.
A good thing.
Anyone else want to...
Do you want to say it?
Positive, I'm in.
Talk about the...
Actually, in some ways, I will riff off of that, because I came in, and this is my last one for tonight. I came in, quote, "Loaded for bear" tonight, but I actually got clipped in that, in that session. I mean, I thought it was the worst of times to start with, and it feels to me like the best of times, even in the wake of John, what you just said, because now more than ever, it seems to me, this is the time when we have to advocate on behalf of public education in the U.S. We simply have to. I mean, if the gloves come off, that's fine. We need to be rational. We can't be blind to the challenges we have. I mean, our discussion of assessment, frankly, the bond is a recognition of things that we have to get better at, and we have to do those things. But at the end of the day, it's... But at the end of the day, it seems to me, the promise, maybe even the privilege of public ed is that every kid, regardless of race, socioeconomic class, national origin, it does not matter, every one of those kids who comes in one of our doorways or uses one of our computers under a bridge deserves a world-class, engaging, relevant, and personalized education. And we have to deliver on that promise, and the teachers who deliver on that promise more than anybody in this room, the teachers deliver on that promise, they deserve our support. So I would say this is a time to sort of use a little swagger to defend what we saw in that room there, what we heard in this room today, and I think we have to argue loudly and proudly on behalf of public education in the U.S.
I just want to thank the teachers and the students who took the time at the end of their day when they're exhausted to come, set up, talk to us, answer questions, and all the other parents that came to experience all of that. So just a general thanks for having your team do that. But the other thing is, is I, there was a lot of takeaways, but one in particular is looking at the A-L-E-K-S. Alex, adaptive software for the math teacher, it was the kickapoo teacher and the student. But when you approve a budget and you see adaptive software, or you read in the consent, you know, whatever, but just to actually see it being used and the teacher saying, do you know how much time this is saving me from paper pencil grading that I can now spend on instructional time? And I can see, she was like, look at this, I can see, you know, one click here and one click there, that this student's ready to move on, so that student can move on. And this, and these three students, I need to meet in small group because they're falling behind. And so, you know, we talk about technology, and sometimes people think technology and they may poo-poo it or whatever. But when you see teachers and students using that technology to move and to increase instructional hours, and the girl that was there was saying, I'm already going to take, you know, the next math classes because I'm moving along so quickly. And so it's just neat to see things like adaptive software and what it's actually doing in the classroom. So I thank the people who took the time to, out of their busy days, to come and just demonstrate that. It's very exciting.
That student you talked to? I asked her, I said, would you have taken calculus if you hadn't had Alex? And she said, no way. She said, I could not, I did not get it. And she said, Alex, I mean, granted, taking calculus is enough said, but still, she said, if it hadn't been for Alex, she would not have even considered going to that next level.
Meaning because she'd had a foundation with Alex before she got to calculus?
She didn't feel comfortable, yes.
Is that what you mean? Yeah, I hear you. That makes sense.
She was very confident that she can do that.
I went to Charles, and I'm like, go see that software. I'm like, you could totally geek out on this.
Because I asked her, I said, I was hoping she's going to be an engineer because of that, but no, she's going to be something better, she's going to be a math teacher.
That's awesome.
And so I thought, pretty cool.
It made me both inspired and feel really dumb.
I looked at it and saw the graph, and I'm like, oh, no, I don't want to see it. I don't remember that, no. But yeah.
So for those of you that are listening, and for those of you in the audience, we had this evening earlier, I call like a big learning fair. And we had all ages, and we had all content areas, and we had teachers that were distributing, they were displaying some of their students' work based on students' use of technology and some of their video clips. So we just saw some amazing things this evening before our board meeting. The only problem is, we probably need to start about two hours.
That's right.
Because there were so many things, and, you know, we each got caught up in particular groups. And when I had three little fourth grade girls that started explaining symbiotic relationships to me. And then I got to look at some bones, and they're practically in the way. So an amazing evening, and it is one that we could just let some of the folks in our community see the amazing examples of learning that's going on for our kids. So it was a great evening for us, and energizing because here it is, light the light, and we're all so kind and excited.
I'm ready to make my motion whenever you want.
I'm coming meetings.
I want to mention, take one second.
Jerry, go ahead, sure.
And I've talked to, last week I had the opportunity to go to Springdale, Arkansas, to visit a charter school in Springdale that was sponsored by the local board, Board of Education, called the School of Innovation in Springdale. And they're comparable to us, they're about 23,000, it's the largest in the state, about 23,000 students. One of the most incredible schools I've ever been to. They just started it three years ago, and they're working their way up to eight through 12 to do that. But it's charter school, it got lots of waivers, no seat time, no Carnegie units, they got the waivers for that, so it's all based on mastery as students move through. And it was just pretty incredible what they have done, and they've gone from, they've got out of this career-ready, college-ready to innovation-ready. That's their model. And, I mean, there are steps to get there, but that's their ultimate peak is innovation-ready, and the next thing is being student-centered, so the students on an individualized, of things that are happening for these students. And it's a choice school, so they, parents choose to go there. But it was worth seeing, we do a lot of the things we saw here, just not to scale yet. We're not there yet. I think we're doing some of the same things. I mean, they, the one math class, one math thing they had was this room probably three times bigger than this one, had four math classes going on at the same time. You could hear a pin drop. 160 kids in this one, four teachers, four pods that were doing, I mean, I've seen 160 adults that wouldn't have been as well behaved as the kids were in this one, learning. All iPads, one-to-one technology. And, I mean, it was just really, is one of those things where back to what could we do ahead of some of the stuff that we're hearing, and how could we do that? Whether it's bring it to scale, do something different, got us thinking about how to do it the right way and not just do it because somebody said to do it. And so I, I was just, I'm hoping that we can get people down there to look at it. It was pretty incredible. It was worth the trip, two-hour drive down there to see the high school. And it was just, I mean, it's, I don't remember how, you couldn't remember how many square feet it was, $35 million building that got built, and.
How many students?
Ultimately, there's 1,000. Their target is 1,000, 200 per class. They're not there yet. They've got two more years to tier up to that with another, well, it's a 90-acre facility, 90-acre footprint. 2,000, you know, they purchased 90 acres, they've got all kinds of land that they're doing from a standpoint, I mean, we talked to the principal there, and he says, I don't know what's going on, I don't want to know what's going on in some of these classrooms. They are so far out there on some things, technology-wise and research-wise. It was turning the kids loose. I'd met with one student who was a ninth grader, he had designed the entire security swipe-card system for the school.
That they were using?
They were using it, and so basically.
Except him.
Kids are, yeah, except him. There was no swipe cards. If you walk in and out of a building or in and out of a classroom, it automatically reads it. You just, it's on, reads it, and this kid's going to go far. I mean, he was a brilliant kid and didn't really know what he had. I mean, he really is, actually, what's scary is he might. Ask him what he wanted to do, and he says, I don't have a clue.
That's good.
And he said, I don't know yet. But it was just worth seeing something that can happen, even in a charter school, that they got the waivers, I mean, it was part of the Race to the Top grant that Arkansas got. But still, it was just one of those really felt good when I came home thinking, oh my gosh, how do I do something with this tomorrow? So.
So have you made us our swipe cards?
I'll have the kid come up. We can subcontract it. But I just would encourage you to.
What's it called?
Don Tyson School of Innovation.
I mean, money makes things.
Really? No, I asked that question. I said, did he build this? And they go, actually, he didn't give a whole lot of money. The school, the state funds construction in Arkansas. So they got bond issued with local, 60% state, 40% local, I think that's right. Different formula for states where Missouri doesn't do that. But it's worth the time, and so I'll give you all the information, and I think you know the superintendent, he's a pretty good guy. He's just very creative and innovative, so that's.
Thanks, maybe that's a field trip.
Field trip, yep.
Okay, upcoming meetings, we have our next board meeting, regular board meeting, February 21st. Now, coming up, February 9th, oh, did we skip cabinet reports?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So on February 9th, we have a big event, SPS Teach. Lisa, am I correct in that's what we're calling it?
Yes, it is.
And you want to just?
It's going to be right down the road, and it starts right at, I think, 6-ish, and we're going to be setting up, and I think we're expecting a good crowd.
These are future families.
Yeah, right.
Had a huge turnout last year.
Yeah, and I think he's expecting a really good turnout this year too.
Any other upcoming meetings? There's going to be so many upcoming meetings that we're all going to have to really pay attention to our calendars as we start to engage or to start our meetings or start our community involvement. So can't begin to listen right now, but we'll need to keep track, watch our calendars.
We've got MSBA legislative stuff next again.
Say it again, Alina.
The MSBA Legislative Forum in Jeff City.
I think Jerry and Alina have had to represent SPS, so walk the halls.
Valentine's Day in Jeff City.
And we have students that will be in the Capitol next Tuesday for a showcase, educational, well, school showcase, they're doing GoCaps. So we've got kids that'll be in the Capitol Rotunda, displaying what's going on with GoCaps.
And when is that?
That's that afternoon, the 14th in the afternoon. So we'll be able to go over there and see them do that.
Okay. Moving on to our plus deltas, so something that worked tonight that you can say, you can note, you can put on the board, something that you may improve. And.
When are we getting new computers? Are we getting new computers?
So at this time, we'll put a vote to go into exec session. I'm going to kind of loop into a vote to go into exec session.
Oh, no, I'll be bold if we.
Loud and proud.
So at this time, the board will conduct an executive session following this meeting to discuss personnel matters as provided in Section 610.021, 3, and 13 RSMO. I am looking for a motion. Thank you, Alina Leonard, a second.
Second.
We have a few seconds, but we'll do Charles. And we do need to take a vote, so those of you that can vote.
Aye.
Oh, yes.
So let's do this in order.
Aye.
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 And the reason for that is because we have three computers that.
Has to be a roll call.
They're tired.
No, they're tired.